Very good. All right. Well, welcome to the January 12th, 2021 Norfolk Planning Board Meeting. My name is Walter Byron. I'm the Planning Board Chair. And please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda at present can hear me. So let me begin by introducing the the members of the board, John Weddleton.
Yeah.
Aaron Hunt.
Here.
Gary Searle.
Here.
And Chad Peck.
Here.
We also have with us this evening our Town Planner, Richard McCarthy.
Here.
And our Administrative Assistant, Betsy Fajol.
I am here.
Along with your cat, I believe.
Um, you somewhere.
Okay, so this open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to encourage and encourage to participate remotely. The order you can find posted on the town's website, as well as the agenda materials for this meeting. And it allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not necessarily ensure public participation. This meeting, however, will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening by the Zoom application, as posted on the town website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording of the meeting. Just to just to confirm, any votes taken this evening will be taken by roll call vote. All right, with that out of the way, let us turn to our agenda and our first meeting agenda item is the interviewing of Associate Planning Board Members. We have two candidates, having had none for many months, we suddenly find ourselves with two, which is a wonderful position to be in. So welcome to Chris Montfort and Paul Burns. Are you there, gentlemen? There's Chris.
Hello.
I'm looking for Paul. Where's Paul? Paul, Paul. I see Paul speaking, but not of it, not on video. Okay. Well, I want to begin with with Chris. Chris, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be an Associate Planning Board Member?
Sure. So my name is Chris Montfort, originally from New York. I was born and raised in the Bronx. Moved to Yonkers, New York when I was about 16, and then came to Boston for college. I went to Northeastern.
You're not a Yankees fan, are you?
I, I, let's leave that off the record.
Okay, all right.
Good idea. I know how to pick my battles in this town. Went to Northeastern after I graduated. I was working at a dental implant company in Jamaica Plain, met my wife there. And we lived in Norwood for a while when we decided to purchase this house after having two children. We were looking for towns and Norfolk seemed like the best fit. I grew up in an apartment and there was five of us and a dog. And so land was something that was a commodity to me that I really wanted to take advantage of. So I'm very happy with the whole acreage lots that I found in Norfolk. And that was a big reason why I decided to come here, not to mention the great schools and all that. We eventually had two other children, so there's four other Montforts going through the Norfolk school system. We've been here for probably about eight years. During that time, I've worked in Cambridge, so I've dealt with the commute. I've dealt with the commuter rail. I've driven in and I eventually, about six years ago today exactly, started working at Google. I did a year in San Jose where my wife and children stayed here. And then they transferred me to the New York office. And so for a while, I've been commuting back and forth between New York and Boston, working from homes on the Fridays. Usually Thursday, Friday, I'd work from home and then travel back. Very fortunate that my mother still lives there, so that helps. And outside of that, I'm a Lions member. I've been a Lions Club member for about the last three years. My favorite event is the Christmas tree sales. It's a great time to meet everyone in town, meet new people who come to town, purchase Christmas trees and just kind of spread that Christmas cheer. That's pretty much it. Oh, I was also a Lions Club Board Member for the youth soccer team as well.
Okay, and what is your interest in the Planning Board?
Getting involved. We've got a lot of underutilized space in town and I've heard a lot of frustrations. Just, you know, hearsay from individuals saying that we can't get things done in town. And I figured if you can't, you know, be a part of it, then you can't really complain about it. So I want to be a part of it and make sure that whatever we do in town is going to be conducive to the idea of what I'd like for the community and for my children going forward as they they age here.
All right. Well, thank you, Chris. You appreciate that. Any questions from Board Members?
Well, I I know you've been attending the last few meetings. Have you participated or sat in on any Planning Board meetings or town meetings over the years that you've been in the town?
One of the first things that we did prior to moving to this town was going to a town meeting. That was our first foray into learning about Norfolk and it was a pivotal moment for us because I love the fact that the town got so involved. It was, like I said, between seven and eight years ago now, so I don't remember exactly what was on the docket. But as we walked in, I heard a loud, large outcry because people were not happy with the way the vote went. And I was like, all right, well, if they're that upset, then that means they really were passionate about what they were voting on. And, you know, when people are passionate about something, that means they care. And so it showed me that the town cared about the direction of how everything was going. So that, to me, was a huge reason for us to come here. We've been to several other town meetings as well since. It's been kind of hard for me admittedly because of the commuting back and forth to New York. A lot of the work that I was doing prior to this year was traveling, so I've been all over the the country. But I do try and follow up as much as I can with the Norfolk cable television and whatever is available on YouTube. And now it's been a while since I've been on Facebook, but now I'm hearing a lot more through Facebook since we've rejoined, since a lot of things that have been going on with the school have been communicated through that avenue.
Very good. I'll speak for the rest of the Planning Board Members and congratulate you on your desire to volunteer and participate in our in our group. It's it's a it's an unfunded position. The Select Board cut our salaries to the bone a couple of years ago. And so we all do this for free.
Nice.
Yeah, but we get time and a half after 9:30.
That's right.
Awesome.
Thank you very much, Chris. Mr. Burns, Paul Burns, would you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be a member of the Associate Member of the Planning Board?
Sure. Hi, everybody. Thanks for giving me time to speak tonight and for considering my application. And Chris, I have to say, nice job on your part. So best of luck to you as well. So, you know, this actually was a recent option, I suppose, that came to me by way of Kevin Calcutt. You know, first of all, you know, Paul Burns, 32 Union Street, lived here in Norfolk for seven great years. I think it's a it's a wonderful town, you know, to live in. And we've definitely grown roots over that seven-year period. And, you know, want to stay here for the foreseeable and the unforeseeable future. So, you know, just taking a better, a stronger interest in in town matters. Really kind of the catalyst for all of this for me was an accident that happened on my street in October that you may be aware of. It happened right in front of my house where a car hit a utility pole. Car and the pole were demolished. I happened to be outside at the time and it was quite an accident. And I had long thought that Union Street might be a bit of an unsafe street. As anybody who might drive it may agree with me. But I've also watched it change over the time that I've lived there and seen it become kind of a riskier matter for pedestrians. So that coupled with the fact that, you know, I I learned that even the month prior to that accident, there was another serious accident on Union. You know, I thought it was time for somebody to try and and make a difference regarding the safety of Union Street. So I don't want to be too long-winded here with this story. But basically, you know, got in touch with with Blythe, who, you know, to her credit, convened a small meeting with Blair from the DPW and the Chief Police, Chief Stone. And and a neighbor of mine, we kind of had a little discussion for about an hour on Union and Castle about, you know, the issues going on with it. And, you know, we talked about the potential to build a sidewalk to make it more safe for pedestrians. And at that point, I think we went down a bit of a sidewalk path discussion where the Chief Stone talked about sidewalk discussions in years past. And he's been on committees. And, you know, we talked about that. And I think he kind of gave me a call to action, which was, you know, why don't you get on, why don't you start a committee or something like that? And, you know, and it's something I hadn't really considered, but I think you made a great point about, you know, taking ownership for wanting to bring about change. So I went down that path and actually officially applied to get a sidewalk committee started with the Select Board. Kevin Calcutt knew about this open position and thought it might be, you know, because I believe he came up through the Planning Board. Thought it might be an excellent opportunity to, you know, have some insight into what processes go and, you know, are involved in planning such things, but also, you know, the the greater planning for the good of Norfolk. And, you know, when he presented that as an option, I thought it was a great idea. So here I am, you know, I certainly, it's important to me to to continue to make Union Street safer, but I think that it's a it goes beyond that. Just wanted to get involved with town government and have sort of good stewardship, you know, for the future of our town. That's kind of the piece of what drove me here. The the very quick CV is 20 years in corporate procurement. Undergrad at Babson College, MBA at UMass Eisenberg. So my my background is basically, you know, vendor management, but that's wide variety of of skills that I could potentially bring to the table here. Contract negotiation, RFP management, financial analysis and and the like. So that's kind of my piece. Any questions?
If you, Walter, may I ask a question?
Sure, John, but please.
Of the two applicants, have you, any of you ever read an engineered plan, a site plan? Any experience with that? Because that's what we do.
Yeah, so for me, the last six years of my life at Google have been working on building out our infrastructure for either data centers or for video conferencing solutions, enabling Googlers across all of North America to collaborate.
So you've worked with civil engineered plans?
I haven't done external, but I can read architectural drawings and civil plans.
You, Paul?
The only site plan that I've reviewed in recent memory was the site plan to install the solar array behind my house on Union. So I'm quite familiar with that. But beyond that, in my day to day, no, I have not.
We have a civil engineer on our board that would be happy to tutor you guys all the way through and bring you right up to speed, right, Chad? Thank you.
Walter, I would ask a question, which is, is there a limitation to only having one associate on the board?
I believe that's true, Gary. Yeah, we are limited to one, you know, so we must make a choice at some point here.
Well, while we may be enjoying an embarrassment of riches currently, I do believe that the zoning board has an opening. So if one of the gentlemen doesn't doesn't win the lottery here tonight, the zoning board certainly has an opening. And then there's also the B1 Committee. You know, the study of the downtown, which is an ongoing effort. So two other opportunities.
Aaron, when you say the zoning, you're referring to the zoning ZBA?
Yes.
Okay, an opening for Associate Member.
I see. Okay.
They were there for a while, actually.
The zoning, for for your information, gentlemen, the zoning ZBA zoning bylaws appeal board deals with people who wish to do something that that's slightly outside the current bylaws or regulations, and they come and appeal to the board and say, you know, we really like to put this shed on our property or build a pool. It doesn't quite fit the way the regulations require. And here's the reasons why, blah, 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 blah. And then the zoning board will rule on that and give them a ruling. So it's it's akin to what we do, but it's generally after the fact of a site plan where someone has built something. All right. So any other questions by Board Members? All right, hearing none, then here's what I propose, that we that we take under advisement the the request to be an Associate Member, and I will tell both of these gentlemen that we will, we will make a vote on this at some point, either this evening or at the latest at the next meeting. And we will notify you. This is a joint appointment by the Planning Board and the the Select Board. Usually, a Select Board will take a recommendation from the Planning Board and vote on it at one of their subsequent meetings. So it does take two votes to to get on the the Planning Board as an Associate Member. And I really thank you, as Gary said earlier, for being willing to volunteer in town government. That's how the government here in the town really works. We have a lot of paid employees who work out of Town Hall and DPW and the fire station, the police station, et cetera. But a lot of the boards and commissions are entirely voluntary and we are always looking for new members. So thank you both for volunteering and we will be back to you shortly.
I just want to say thank you for your time tonight and and sincere thanks for mentioning the other positions that are open. It sounds like, you know, that we could both end up contributing to town government in some fashion here.
Yeah.
Rich, I think David wanted to, he's muted.
David, you're muted.
David, okay. Rich, can you unmute David?
I got it.
Okay, Mr. Rich.
Mr. Rich on Day Street.
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Well, this was a Planning Board thing about a whole division up near us and it's gone fine. But I would love to have Day Street repaved after a long after we had any of it. We would like Day Street repaved.
Well, Mr. Rich, you're you're not alone. There's a lot of people and a lot of streets in town that would like to have repaven, including my own here on Fruit Street. And as I understand it, there is a priority list that the Department of Public Works maintains. And they can get to just so many with the amount of money that they have each year. I have seen a list that that targets the roads they're going to work on in 2021, but I don't have a copy of it in front of me. Rich McCarthy, who is the Town Planner, can put you in contact with the DPW. And you can see where Day Street stands on the list of roads to be paved.
He wants to say something.
Yeah, you've muted him again. One moment, one moment, he's going to unmute you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Okay, and we'll both be happy when our streets are paved. I agree with you. All right. Well, thank you. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is Redwood Circle Noon Hill Acres subdivision. Rich, you want to lead us through that, please?
There's a notice. Do you want me to read the notice?
Yes, please, Gary. Yes, please.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with the Norfolk Planning Board Rules and Regulations for the subdivision of land and Mass General Law, Chapter 41. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 12th, 2021 at 7:15 PM regarding a property located at Redwood Circle Noon Hill Acres subdivision off Day Street in Norfolk, Mass. The Planning Board will be discussing and potentially voting to pull the bond for failure to complete the subdivision within the allowed time period. The property is located in the R3 zoning district. Previous assessors map 24 block 55 lot 73 and current assessors map 23 block 55 lots 73 dash 2, 3 and 4 and 5. Contact the Planning Board Office for more information.
Thank you, Gary. All right, now it's your turn, Rich.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and the public. Brief outline of where we are, where we came from to get up to this point. So I, one of the, I started here in November of 2017 and one of the ongoing issues that really started and landed us here, I think, to a degree, we'll all have different opinions about that, was the street sign for Redwood Circle that was supposed to be installed. And the the good news is, as we talked tonight, that sign is installed. It was installed by DPW, so that's one small step forward. But in the course of discussions relative to a street sign, things kind of shifted towards when would the road be completed as far as construction go. At the time, that was earlier on when I was here, all the subdivision lots weren't built out yet, which is not unusual per se for some of these subdivisions. It takes a little bit longer to build out than perhaps originally planned and marketed for a variety of different reasons. So as of the the surety that was posted with the Planning Board, which is, there's a money sitting in a in a bank account held by the town Norfolk. The completion date for the subdivision was December 20, December 31st, 2018. At that particular point in time, all the lots weren't built out. There was one remaining lot left. That lot has been built, completed, and the homeowners have occupied the building that how, home, I think it was October, no, September this past year. So needless to say, the the construction work that would delay completing the road as far as heavy equipment, et cetera, is is passed. So it's gone past. So I've had a few email conversations, Mr. Delzell, phone calls back and forth, as well as with the residents. So tonight, we're here because we want to solidify getting this road completed. And the residents have requested the Planning Board to move to this next step, which is a step that the Planning Board can do. And you have put it before yourselves this evening. By modifying the special permit to find Mr. Delzell and default to then, which if you vote to find him default, you would then write a letter to the treasurer notifying her that you seek to utilize the funds being held to complete the road. Now, also for consideration tonight is Mr. Delzell has progressed forward to present to the board a signed contract as it relates to landscaping, which you received today. As well as he's been in conversations with Hugo Di Martino, who was the original builder, road builder for the subdivision. I did email you earlier today that I spoke to Mr. Di Martino. He thought he had to present a contract next week, not this week. So needless to say, he hasn't completed the contract. However, what he wanted to do before he would provide a full contract to Mr. Delzell is walk the site with DPW, go over the condition of the roadway, what needs to be fixed as far as what's out there today, what needs to be done to bring it to completion. And then come back to Mr. Delzell, give him the list, what it is, how much it would cost. And then present a contract to Mr. Delzell to sign to move forward. So Mr. Delzell is here. He's on the line. He's not here on video, but he is here on the phone to say that he wishes to, I believe, finish the subdivision, not have the the town pull the bond to do that. We've had conversations with the neighbors as we have in other situations that we utmost try to have the developer finish it as opposed to the town. But it is the town's responsibility to make sure things get done. And he has come forward. So part of the discussion will be what path to take. But I think one of the things that the residents, and I spoke to them a few times, is milestones, assurances that if the path is chosen to have and finish it, that things get finished in a timely manner and is done and over with. The road gets petitioned to be accepted as as a town road. And they can go on living their lives, hopefully in a nice neighborhood as they are right now. And the Planning Board's responsibility is done and we go on our way. So that's kind of a quick thumbnail sketch.
Rich, before we ask Mr. Delzell to speak, tell me a little bit more about the landscaping contract whether it would indeed result in in fulfilling the the landscaping requirements of the original set of plans.
Yeah, so the landscape, the contract that was provided to you is based on a landscape plan that was approved with the subdivision. There has been conversations with the neighbors since, you know, they've already occupied their houses, they have landscaped their yards already, that there might be some interest in varying up the landscaping that was originally approved because it's it's happening at the the tail end, so to speak, of the development completion that, you know, they spent a lot of time, money and energy to landscape their homes, so they don't want to have it conflicting per se. So that's one thing that whether what path we choose is something that I would like to have worked on. Either Mr. Delzell's working with myself and the neighbors, or again, if it's just the town and the neighbors, we work towards that way. The trees were spaced out a lot tighter than the board originally. So the town has spread out the plantings, number one, since this time, since the subdivision is approved. And the second thing we've learned from DPW, and they've been before you before, is to try to move the trees out of the landscape strip between the back of curb and the sidewalk. Because depending upon, you know, overall site conditions, you end up oftentimes with sidewalk heaving as the roots grow or you have a situation where the plant doesn't have as much space to breathe and grow to full scale. So the trees that we have in town, if you drive around, this kind of mixed results between the back of sidewalk street tree versus in between the sidewalk. I think DPW would, and I know they have already advocated, and they're on the line too tonight to speak about this, but they like to work to put the trees behind the back on the sidewalk side. And then on the other side, figure.
Rich, if I if I could interject real quick, apologies, but it's, I think it would be helpful to have a plan or something to look at.
Sure, we can, I can, I can get the plan.
So just to summarize, Rich, before we get off track, the landscape plan that you sent us includes everything included in the subdivision approved plans, plus there are extra street trees because we changed the width between them a few years ago. Is that correct?
Yeah, you did.
Whether they decide to plant them here or there really doesn't affect what we're talking about. The 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 plan is complete and inclusive of everything that was signed up for, plus.
Correct. And it also includes the the landscape island?
Right, I saw that. Exactly. That's what I said. It includes everything on the approved plans.
Yeah.
John, what what plan are you looking at, John?
It's the subdivision plan that was initially recorded.
It's it's the one in the packet?
Yeah, it's the one in the packet. It's 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 this one. You you'll find it if you look in your packet, Aaron.
Yeah, I'm getting it right now, Aaron. I'll put it up on the screen. I just wanted to.
They did a takeoff based on that subdivision plan. But like I said, we don't want the trees 35 feet apart because they grow into each other. So there's probably an extra seven or eight trees there that probably won't be included.
Yeah, and so, but the point is that I think that Rich made for for the members of the board here is that there's sufficient money to finish the landscaping and have the trees a few, a few. Have the trees, a few, a few less trees, but have them spaced according to our new regulations.
Right, right. So can you see a landscape plan on the screen?
See that, Aaron?
Hey, yeah, I got it, I got it open now.
Okay, good.
It's shown up on the screen, so. And another piece, since we've had, you know, we've, we've had discussions with the residents in the neighborhood. When these subdivisions were planned and permitted through the planning board. The landscape islands were, you know, they're, they're great as far as aesthetic value goes and less impervious area. But from an overall maintenance standpoint, with DPWs necessarily have the manpower to maintain these, so we would have asked. Never really talked to the neighbors here as well, and similarly, to adopt the. Essentially the, the plantings in the cul-de-sac island. So we want to make sure that we, we planted in a, in a manner that's, you know, works for the neighborhood. But also is easy to maintain long term because we're going to rely on them to partner with us. We don't have, there's not an association. With the subdivision that would be responsible to maintain that and that has developed in other subdivisions. You know, after this one was permitted, so. The.
Just a quick question, seeing as how there was a pause in the conversation. The proposal is currently dated and we're in the start of January and there's no issue with it. Being the same cost when the warmer weather gets here. The, the proposal is valid for what, six months?
But the, the contract also says, Gary, that he has the right to adjust the pricing based on when he starts.
And it says all work will be completed before July thirty first.
Yeah, and, you know, we, we've heard similar problems, certain trees don't exist or. Cost of labor changed in six months, any number of reasons, but providing that we're just making a commitment regardless of. The proposal that's here that was just in front of the slide you're showing. Regardless of that, the, the statement is that we're committing to the work that's identified on the proposal. That will be executed when the warm weather gets here for that approximate cost.
Well, we want to hear that from Mr. Delzell in a minute too, but you're right, yes. All right, Mr. Delzell, would you care to say some, to, to contribute to the discussion here?
Sorry, Walter, just real quick before we jump to the applicant. But Rich, if you could summarize for us. What's being asked of us this evening?
So would you, first, what's asked of you, you, you have a hearing that you just opened up to potentially find Mr. De. Delzell in default, which means if you find him in default. The completion of subdivision would be done by the town Norfolk. We would utilize the funds that are being held at the treasurer's office. We've done some preliminary cost takeoffs, what we have updating the spreadsheet. There is at least some concern depending upon how pricing comes in. Whether we can meet that with the money we're being, that's being held right now, because we would have a, a different rate. To have to pay to do the work because we're, as a public, because we have to put it out to bid, bid the items. Mr. Dalzell, obviously because he's a private developer, you know, can probably get things done at a better price than we can in some instances. But, so the question is, who's going to perform? Either the board will allow Mr. Dalzell to perform with some milestones and measurements and oversight. From as we would any completion of the subdivision, or are we essentially going the path of. The planning board finding him in default, and then now it would shift to me working with DPW to. You know, get the project completed and then report back to the planning board.
So, so presumably Mr. Delzell is here tonight to explain to us why. He, he can get a scope of work done that previously we didn't think would happen.
Yeah, he'll, I'm sure, he's going to tell you that he can, he can get it done and. And he doesn't think it's probably that far away from when it was originally.
So at this point, let's, let's ask Mr. Delzell to chime in, please, Mr. Delzell.
Hi, everyone. When I started this in two thousand and eight. My goal was to build my house, which I lived in the town for thirty six years. And to build my house in the big lot all the way in the back. And with things going on and my kids going to school in New Hampshire. This, this project started in two thousand and eight and I was always told. That when the last house is built, then I finish the road. And in the last three months, four months. Some of the things being said has irked me a little bit, so I think Rich summed it up the best. That, as I say, it's, it was always my intention to finish this. But I, I really don't have anything to say. I want you guys to vote to pull it. Or let me finish it. Hugo was always ready to finish it and the landscaping part of it is. Is what it is. I, I, I have no problem finishing it, but that's all I have to say on the matter. And you guys vote to pull it or not, or let Hugo fit, go in and GNC finish it up?
Well, it strikes me that if we're going to follow that last option, Mr. Delzell. We would like to see the assigned contract with some definite dates on it. And it sounds like that you and the contractor will be talking to each other if, if we. Go down that road, no pun intended, to, to each other sometime within the next week or two or three. Such that you could bring a signed contract back to the, to the board at the next meeting. Is that true?
Yeah, that's, I, I've talked to Hugo several times. As when the road went in, I never had a contract with them. I don't, as a rule. Need contracts with people that I deal with all the time. But like I told Hugo, I need something for you, if that's the course that you want to take. If you want to pull a bond, there's more than enough money there to do the things that have to be done. That's fine by me. But my goal was to always to finish it. Hugo's was always to do what I needed to finish it. He started it and he knows that he was going to finish it. I don't remember giving a contract when I started the road from Hugo.
Yeah, understood, all right. Well, history is, is one thing, but. But I think if, if the board does decide to allow you to finish it, we would like to see a contract, a signed contract at our next meeting. So let's see, questions from board members, please?
I, I guess regarding the contract again, if there are some simple milestones with comfortable dates. Nothing that, you know, again, a, a date passes by a week or something and, and they're in default. I'm just looking to see target dates. I'm sure the people that live in the area want to see the same thing. If, if that can be incorporated, that's fine, and I guess I would look forward to the, how soon the first milestone could be met. That's the reason I'm asking.
Well, the landscape contract, Rich calls for what is its final debt, uh, date?
It's July thirty first, John.
July thirty first?
Yeah.
The trees would have to be planted probably in May because it's out of the season after that. So as long, I mean, we're, we're not wasting time now because it's winter, so if you can get that road finished by the end of June or so, then. I'd rather see that happen than have the DPW put this on their plate because they already have plenty on their plate now, so.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things, at minimum, we've, from where we've been. Just the, you know, two months ago, maybe even a month and a half ago, like I said, I heard from Hugo today. He explained what he wanted to be able to do, as I mentioned earlier, talk to DPW. You know, weather permitting, obviously, that it can, they can walk the street, identify the issues that need to be repaired, et cetera, and then come back to Mr. Dalzell. February ninth is not that far away, still within the winter, not going to be doing work at this point. So. It, it seems it's reasonable to try to, to, you know. Essentially continue this hearing to that meeting and see if we can get a contract and everything buttoned up between now. And then to have a better idea for the planning board, since he's making an effort at this, this juncture now. For you tonight.
Well, if I may interject, I, I'd like to know tonight, because I will not be around February ninth.
Oh, okay.
I, I'd like a decision made tonight. People know where I stand on this. I. You know, i- i- I need a decision tonight.
So Rich, what are the outstanding items? We got a road, we got landscaping, do we have to asbuilds?
No, no, I'm asbuilt too.
Okay, so it's just really rote, rote, you know, final paving?
Yep, there's curbing, curbing needs to be, there's some replacement reset, granite curving right now there. It's, it's in tough shape. I don't know, Barry's there, I don't know if he's been out there or not, but, you know, we got a clean catch, you know, catch basin, storm drain. Ultimately, we're going to need the deeds to the road to get it accepted, asphalt plan, acceptance, et cetera. So, and finish the top coat on the paving for the road, so there's. There's a, there's a amount of work to be done, but it's not.
So it all sounds like it's feasible to get it done this year or this summer. Get it, all get it, get it all done this summer so that we can put it on the town, fall town meeting to, for the town to accept it.
Yeah, this is two weeks worth of work, that's it. The landscaping is three days in total. They have to fix the curbing, pave the road, it's going to take about three hours, it's just not a big deal.
Right, that's the point I was getting at, yeah.
I'm sorry, Chad, I, I didn't mean to talk over you. Mr. Delzell, you say you will not be available, but between now and February ninth. Do you think you'll be able to nail down a contract with your contractor on the road?
Well, Hugo was talking to Rich today and I've talked to Hugo several times. And he's, he's like me, i- i- if I have to give a contract, I'll do it. But that's not how you and I work, so he will give a contract on what is required to finish the road. And that'll be through fourth, February ninth.
That's fine, if that contract can be signed by you and then delivered to Rich, we would, we would probably entertain that. So I, I will make a motion to continue this public hearing until our meeting on February ninth. Do I have a second?
Oh, Walter, real quick, sorry. How did this issue come before us?
Has it come before you? The, I'm sure, well, they're on anyway, the residents came forward. To, to myself and then myself through you to the planning board about wanting to see the roadway completed and finished and getting it done. So it was received by the residents.
Mr. McCarthy, could I just pose a quick question, please?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Delzell, thank you so much for being here. We're so excited that you're part of this meeting. Quick question, could you walk us through your plan for the street?
I can't, no.
Okay, are you unable to walk us through?
This is scheduled for the, for the road.
Okay, thank you. Are you unable to walk us through because you don't have it in writing? Do you have in writing exactly what needs to be done?
Yes, from the town.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you. And also, my final question, would you be open to working with a landscaper of our choice?
No.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion, I made a motion, I need a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor of continuing this public hearing on Redwood Circle until. Our meeting on February ninth, please say aye. Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Searle? Mr. Hunt?
Sorry, Walter, just a clarification before I vote. There was just a reference to a schedule for the completion of the work that's been discussed. Am I missing it or?
I don't believe we have a schedule other than the, 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 we have a list, but not a schedule.
Well, she asked me, she asked me a schedule of events to finish the road. Basically, what I interpreted that as is what i- is left to be done. And I have a, a schedule, I call it a schedule. Curbing, paving, landscaping, things like that.
Right, but in order for us to follow and be on the same page, we have to have some sort of timetable to work with. Otherwise, your plan might be in your head in one way and then, and hours and hours, so we need to be on the same page.
If, if I might, if I might jump in as, as the board here. I, that was going to be my comment as well, Walter. I mean, th- this was brought to, this was brought to our attention by the public. Right, because of some concerns about the completion of the work. I, I don't have any understanding of what the proposed completion of the work is. Does, does anybody else on the board?
You know, the only thing you have right now in writing is the landscape contract, which referenced, which has the July, July date in it. So the schedule as it relates to the road contractor's schedule needs to be provided yet, you don't have it as of yet.
So don't, so shouldn't we be asking for a schedule for the completion of the work?
We may be, but we're in the middle of a motion to, to continue the public here. We can discuss this further. After the motion is made and voted on, so your vote, please. Aye or no?
Guys, can you, can you just chime in here quickly, I'm sorry?
No, you can't, no, you cannot, sir, from, not till I finish this vote. Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Very good, so we have, we have voted, and share votes aye, so we have voted to continue the public hearing until February ninth. Now, sir, you wish to say something?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm sorry for, for talking over you. You know, we're a resident down here and. One of the sort of big concerns of ours besides schedule and getting expectations synced up. Is, is just the, the fact that at this point, a lot of the residents have spent money, as Rich McCarthy had said. You know, landscaping and, and things like that on their properties. So for us, you know. One of the big points for us is, is having some say in how the landscaping ends up turning out. So for, for Mr. Dalzell to, to say that he is completely opposed to working with us on that.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that. I, I, I said, no, my landscaper. I- i- is a great guy, he will work with the four homeowners, depending on, but the entrance way. The things that the, the town has dictated to me, I'm not able to work with anyone but the town. The entrance way, the plantings over the recharge zones. At the entrance way, things of that nature, this, the center island, I'm open to anything.
Okay.
And I, 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 but there are things that I can't do.
No, that, that, that sounds good, thank you for clarifying that, I'm glad I asked because, you know, we, we really are looking for something that's just. You know, going to work with, with what we have already going on down here, so.
Yeah, the original question was, would, would the, would Mr. Delzell be willing to work with, with a landscaper that was. Suggested by the residents and he said no, because he has a contract with a landscaper called GNC Landscaping and Snow Plowing. That's the signed contract that we referred to earlier. All right, to, to Aaron's point earlier. Rich, you have a list of, a punch list, if you will, do you not, that's beyond landscaping in the street?
We, we do, but we also.
The punch list is on the bond schedule and the remaining items.
Right.
You can get your punch list right from there.
Right.
So all we really, all we really need, you, you can't schedule individual tasks with dates because you don't know availability, you don't know the weather. All we need to know is by this date, whether it be June thirtieth, is everything done and set for approval, that's what we need to know.
Right.
You don't need to know the interim stuff.
Right, but, but we don't have that list of things that needs to be done before us here, or at least I'm missing it if it is here. Don't have it, and we don't have a date for completion, right?
Yes, we need the contract with the date for completion. And Rich has to send us, well, I have a copy, but the bond schedule, the completed items.
Right, and then presumably, because it's been 12 years. If I'm doing, okay, my math, or is it 20 years?
Well, 12 is enough, yeah.
12 more, it's been a number of years. I think one of the things we've talked about is showing dates of progress as we go forward towards this final date of completion, right? And a willingness to work with the residents in the town to reach a satisfactory conclusion. So I would think in order for us to make a vote on whether we're gonna pull this bond or not, or to not pull the bond, wouldn't we need some representation of what our expectations are for how this work is gonna get done?
It's not like Bristol Pond, there's, there's not much left to do. They get the paving of the road, they get to prep the gates.
To pull this together and, and, and get it concluded and move on. At the next meeting, the expectation is we will continue to have the signed landscaping contract. We will have a signed contract for the completion of the road. And we will get a commitment, hopefully from Mr. Dalzell. It says, the punch list of the other items will be completed by such and such a date. If we have those three things, then we can make a decision either to pull the bond or, in fact, allow Mr. Dalzell to complete it. And we should do that at our next meeting. Any other questions on this item?
Yes, when is the next meeting?
Our next meeting is, is February ninth.
Is this the meeting that Mr. Dalzell is not available to attend to?
Yeah.
That's what he said, yeah.
Okay, so what, what does that mean?
Information to review. Rich, you will have the information in advance of the meeting.
The, the missing information will be provided to the planning board for the February ninth meeting, and then ultimately that night will be. Yes, Mr. Dalzell, go forward, or the, the planning board will take a vote to not let him finish, in which case, we, the town will be doing it, we let him, we notify him.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's sort of the, the decision point at that point. All right, well, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Dalzell, for participating.
Okay.
Any other, any other points before we move on? All right, next item on the agenda is 104, 104 Pond Street. Rich?
I think there's another notice.
Yeah, another notice.
There is, there is, Gary.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law Section 40A and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaw Section F11. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 12th, 2021 at 7:45 PM regarding a site plan application for property located at 104 Pond Street in Norfolk, Mass. The applicant, 104 Pond Street LLC of 104 Pond Street, Norfolk, Massachusetts, has submitted an application for site plan approval for the delineation of vehicle parking spaces as depicted on provided plans by United Consultants Incorporated. The property is located in the C1 zoning district, reference assessor's map 19 block 69 lot 42. The plan and application are available for public inspection on the town of Norfolk website, www.norfork.mass.us, or call the planning board office to schedule an appointment.
Thank you, Gary. All right, Rich, take us through this one.
Sure, um, the 104 Pond Street, the owners had purchased the property last year. It's an existing building that was constructed in 1975. I forwarded a, the special permit that was granted by the zoning board of appeals from 1976 to operate automobile sales and auto repair at this property. In, in prior to 19, so between 1968 and 1987, it's kind of an important date to remember, is that site plan approval was issued and done through the building commissioner. In 1987, that, that responsibility shifted to the planning board. We do not have, we went, when the, the new owners purchased the property, they submitted F11 to the billing department, myself and Mr. Bullock, went through the records. We did a site visit with the, the new owners and said that unfortunately, we don't have a record of an approved site plan for this property in order to operate the, the new, to, to essentially continue the use that was already there before, because the property is bought and sold. You're gonna need a site plan approval. So the purpose of this plan is to actually file and have a site plan approved by the planning board to essentially do the same thing. When we changed the site plan bylaw in 2019, you know, the change of tendency triggered the F11. The review was done. We looked at the file. There is no record of a site plan, so there wasn't one in place. Hence, there before you tonight to really operate as was previously done under the new ownership. So that's the, that's the purpose of.
Yep.
This plan before you tonight.
This site plan drawing, which we have received, was, I'm looking for the date, when was it created? Here it is, I see a December 4th last year. So it's, it's just a current one.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
So they're looking to essentially put a plan on record with the planning board, a site plan approval. You may impose some conditions and so forth, but generally, obviously, that's your purview. You would like to hopefully have this plan approved by the planning board, which then will allow them to apply for their class two license with the select board, which
Right.
They will issue until that's been done. So if you look closely to the correspondence, one of the issues that we did correct with the, with the zoning board of appeals a while ago is assign the appropriate address to the special permit. There was a there was an error as far as
Yep.
Yeah, the address assigned to it from the original permit.
Yep, okay. All right, so questions from the board? All right, well, hearing none, then. I think what we should do, Rich, and tell me if I'm wrong, but we should create a motion to approve the the site plan as presented by United Consultants here on.
That's correct. What I would do is I would prepare a certificate of action for the board to review and sign at the, the next meeting.
Right, okay. Or before the next meeting, right. All right, so question, any further questions from the board before we make a motion to approve this site plan?
Just historical question, Rich. So I'm just thinking, is, is, first off, is it allowed use? I knew people were trying to get into the town previously for auto sales. Currently, it's not an allowed use. Am I correct or not?
Right, but is this, yeah.
It's grandfathered in, in this case?
There was a, there was a special permit granted for the use.
Okay, so, and, and the special permit follows from.
Right, it carries forward from the, this one, this one is attached to the property.
Okay.
It wasn't with the, the prior owner. It was continuously used and not abandoned, so it's still.
Okay.
Still valid permit.
Okay. Good. Chad, any questions?
No questions.
Aaron?
None.
John, you all set?
Yep.
All right, then the chair will entertain a motion to approve the, the site plan for 104 Pond Street.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
And Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Share votes aye. All right, gentlemen, you have your approved site plan and Rich will, will pull together a decision. And we will get it signed and make it, make it available to you not later than our next meeting on, on the ninth of February. Okay, next item on our agenda is Next Grid Solar Development 15 Lincoln Road request for site plan modification. I don't think we have anything to read into the record at this point, so Rich, go ahead and take us through this.
So I know we have Phil Paris online with us from Beta Engineering, who has been reviewing. I don't see. No, I know Phil's here. I don't see Next Grid or, but. Okay, well, anyway, I'll carry on. So after the cleanup work was done at the Callaway Site, which is 15 Lincoln Road, they were able to tune up how they were gonna do the stormwater drainage, which was originally potentially something that they had thought, depending upon what they found, what site conditions were afterwards, that they might modify the drainage system. And so essentially, that's what they've requested for the planning board. It's been peer reviewed by Phil through beta. He can talk specifically to different questions, but I think the back and forth as of even as of today, I think we landed on a place where a minor modification could be granted by the planning board for the change in the plan.
Okay, we have seen a letter from Phil dated today that says essentially that all the issues are resolved. Is that correct, Phil?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any other comments you wanna make, Phil?
No, I think in general, it's an improvement. So we listed out the changes in our letter.
Yep.
So I don't know if there's any questions relative to that, but not a huge, not a huge impact, but.
All right. So then we, a- any questions from the board members?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, so then we should take a motion to.
Any public questions, or I don't?
So this one is, uh, this is a minor modification, I mean, public tuning in, but it's not a hearing.
Got it.
So we, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the revisions as described in the beta memo here as minor modifications to the site plan.
What I would, what I'd like to do is get those.
Let's get a second. Okay, Chad, second. Thank you. All right, Rich, go ahead.
I do wanna have those, I'll have them submit the plans to the office, and I'd like to at least maybe have the, the chair or clerk or either, or just sign them for the record, so we have them.
I, I'll be glad to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to accept these as what my modifications of the site plan. Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
And Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
And share votes aye. All right, so that. Anything else on that topic, Rich?
No.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is not until 8:30, so I'd like to drag up two me, two items from the list on the agenda, on the section new old business. The first is the discussion of potential zoning amendments of the Springtown meeting. Rich, why don't you lead us through that?
Sure.
Oh, excuse me, one other thing, before we do that. We did get a, a request from Toils End Farm to postpone the discussion of the letter that we sent them on the drainage until next month. Is that not true?
Yes.
Okay, so we will hear from them next month. Okay, now, back to the item of proposed zoning amendment changes. Go ahead, Rich.
Chairman, if it's possible, could we entertain discussion on the ADA self-evaluation stuff? I know Barry's here, not with us.
Well, I'm, the reason I'm, I'm pushing those two items is that, that we're likely to lose Mr. Weddleton once we get to the nine o'clock hour.
Oh, no, I wanna do it before the nine o'clock hour. No, I just, I think we can do both before 8:30?
Oh, yeah, I'll be quick.
All right, I, I surrender.
So essentially, I'll just provide a little background, then we can go to the board. As you know, we had gone through the process, doing the Complete Streets project. And it's part of that Complete Street project, there was a, an evaluation done townwide for all different modes of transportation, which included sidewalks, bicycles and so forth. It also incorporated the plans that had previously, previously been developed by the town to put sidewalks throughout the town from a previous sidewalk committee. So that work was incorporated into that planning effort as well. This is the, I'll call it a piece of that puzzle, which is to do a ADA compliance evaluation relative to the sidewalks in town as well as a condition assessment of the sidewalks and then a gap analysis. So the goal of this, and this, this plan is also being mirrored with Scott Bragden, the human resource director, got a grant to, to do a ADA self-evaluation transition plan for municipal buildings and properties, which we needed to do. That also would include that work. So because we have overlap and he was able to get us grant money, so we wanna pool our resources, which part of it is the sidewalk funds that, that the planning board collected over time to do the, more the sidewalk aspect gap analysis, so that way, and condition assessment. So as you go forward and sidewalks are planned throughout town, and they wanna do extensions and we have an idea of the condition of them, the gap and now, you know, where we need to do the gaps, be able to better plan.
What is the gap?
So the, the, Joe, the idea with a gap is, as a part of this analysis, we're gonna look at our, our entire sidewalk network, existing, future, and we're gonna do an analysis to look at locations where sidewalks should go or sidewalks shouldn't go. So Rich did a good job. He kinda stole my thunder on this one. But you know, we've been, we've been talking about sidewalks with the planning board for quite a long time, the last couple of months. So this is an opportunity for us to get all of our sidewalks existing, a condition on the existing recommendations where we should have new, look at our master plan, tying into Complete Streets. So once and for all, we'll have a a giant catalog of where we should go, what we should do with sidewalks moving forward in the town of Norfolk.
Are you working off that plan that that two-year committee established on the sidewalks needed in town in priority schedule?
That'll be part of it. So it's, it's taking in existing information, that sidewalk master plan, the complete streets, giving us an assessment of the current conditions of sidewalks. So I think we have about 40 miles of sidewalks in town. I'm estimating about 50% are in poor condition. So the idea with this project is we'll have a complete catalog of what we, of cost to fix what we have and then cost to be able to install new sidewalks. So I think this'll solve a lot of the discussions we've had and, and actually give us a good resource for everything.
Well, it's another group of sidewalk study coming up again after 10 years. And just for the folks that weren't around here 10 years ago, there was a override schedule, the sidewalk fund, so to speak, where money was contributed every year outside the normal budget to put in sections of sidewalks. And the town turned it down. So the sidewalk money is still not here. Obviously, but I got the question, what, how does the ADA and the sidewalks tie in? Because many sidewalks, when they're built, including the one that goes to town hall, cannot be ADA compliant.
So that's, that's part of it. So just like, just like we're doing an ADA assessment of all the buildings, this is an ADA assessment of all the sidewalks. So part of this will give us, we'll get measurements on all of our existing curb ramps, whether they meet compliance or they don't meet compliance. We'll have information regarding all the trip hazards that are on our sidewalks. So it'll give us that master plan to be able to go out and start a. So it'll give us that master plan to be able to go out and start addressing these issues.
But what I'm saying is how do you put a sidewalk in that's up the hill that can't meet ADA compliance?
Well, there is, there is, there is exceptions for grade. There, there are grade issues. If the, if the road is already a steep grade, there are exceptions for the grade requirements for that. There is cross soap, there's horizontal slope. You know, we can't just look at the downtown as example. We have sidewalks throughout the community that are going to have ADA issues.
Most of them, maybe we'll be putting the King Street sidewalk to the, 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 the middle school. I mean, that's not compliant at all.
Exactly. I'm, I'm going to say most of them aren't, but by having this ADA compliance plan too, we have a plan in place. So if anything did come down the pipe, there was any sort of lawsuit or anything, we have a plan in place and we're going to be working toward fixing this plan. It actually covers us. So it's good for the town to be covered on that side of things as well.
I know we kind of, well, never mind, I'll be quiet.
The great irony is everybody talks about sidewalks and we had a connectivity to the center of town that was going to be built and when push comes to shove, no one wants to spend any money to even put a small section of sidewalks annually in. So the squawking is going on constantly, but when it comes time to fund it and, and we have no money for that per se, maybe a small amount in the sidewalk fund, it's just not going to happen.
Well, I think, John, this is going to be a big component of that. A lot, you know, we're missing out on a lot of grant opportunities right now because we really don't have anything shovel ready. So, so the idea for the DPW and in working with Rich is we want to have a balanced plan moving forward of fixing existing sidewalks and putting in new sidewalks. So if I can get dollar values to fix our existing, those are shovel-ready projects. And now we can chase after grants and actually start repairing those. And then prioritize our new sidewalks and then we can focus on getting grants to get those done as well.
So Barry, as I understand it, you, you're looking to, to get one or two or three or four people to bid and then make a decision by the end of the month. And then to have the work completed by the end of June. Is that right?
Yeah, we, we haven't officially met internally yet. I kind of drafted the RFP last week. Blythe, myself, Rich, a couple of us need to get together. It's going to go out to RFP. So we're hoping we get a good, you know, a good influx of people that are interested in doing the project. And then from there, we will choose who, who gets the work. And the tricky part of this too is it's tied in with, with Scott's ADA assessment of, of public facilities. He has a deadline with his grant. So we're hoping that, you know, his portion can be done first and then, you know, with our portion of it, it's going to be some field work involved. So if the weather holds, hopefully they can get out there sooner than later and start getting it going on the, on this.
This is all free money from the state, right?
Thirty-two from the state and the remainder, I'm, we'll be looking for the planning board to contribute from the sidewalk fund.
You know, with your predecessor, you may or may not be aware, we used to spend in the range of two hundred thousand dollars every single year on engineering to call and call Antonio. They engineered probably almost every intersection in this whole town. So we've got the most beautiful set of engineered plans the town could ever dream of. There may be forty intersections. None were ever done because the same old thing. We spend money on these, on these studies and, and free money, I guess is a different thing, but nothing ever happens because there is no money. So I just get skeptically, excuse me, from being a long time into this, that we do study after study after study and nothing happens because there's no funding. Sidewalks with a, with a, with a root in it is, is a lot less consequential than putting another sidewalk that's needed that's a pathway to the center of town.
John, I, I agree with you. I actually made that comment at the selectmen's meeting the other night. I, I'm one, I've seen it a million times, towns waste money on studies. But I think at this point, we're at the crossroads where we kind of need this. So we have a plan in place moving forward. I mean, ballpark costs just to fix Worcester Road, that's a existing sidewalk that's in bad shape. That's a hundred thousand dollars. So we, we really need these baseline numbers to balance old versus new. So then the DPW and planning board can work together to get this stuff to, to repair.
Maybe you can get to the planning board some information. Get us a list of some of the towns in the past five years that have had sidewalk funding given to them.
Oh, I, I can give you a list off the top of my head. I, I worked on a whole bunch of those projects.
And they got money?
Yep.
Just as a matter of interest, what's the small amount of money that is available in the sidewalk fund at the moment?
I think it's like about a hundred and sixty thousand. I think the last time we checked.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, Rich, anything else you'd like to say on this before we move on?
I mean, I, I think what, I know Blythe has her hand up and I'll just defer.
I didn't see that. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. So I, tonight, the, you know, the DPW is looking for you know, the nod from the planning board to, to come use a portion of the sidewalk money to do this analysis. So that's really the, the main purpose for, well, it's informational, but also to request to utilize the portion of sidewalk money for this purpose. So if you need to, if you're not prepared to, to make a vote tonight, we certainly could ask that whatever you may need to make a complete decision, we could move it to February ninth, but ultimately they would like to get the blessing of the planning board.
Rich, I'm, I'm unclear what vote you're asking us to take.
Well, to use the money in the sidewalk fund to, to, to fund a portion of the study, which is the.
Oh, okay. All right. How much is that? How much?
I'm estimating probably anywhere, I'd say fifty to sixty thousand dollars to be safe. My thought is it'll hopefully will come in a lot what lower than that when we actually get the bids in. I think the, the original ADA assessment was probably around thirty grand, but we've added some, you know, the master plan components, the gap analysis. Basically bringing the whole project full circle for complete streets and sidewalks. That's definitely going to raise it a little bit.
Barry, why do, why do we need to approve the, the funds before we know how much is being asked for? Like, why can't we wait till the bids come in?
That's a great question because I was thinking the same thing this afternoon to myself. I think it was more of a thing because you guys manage, you know, that account. I think it's just protocol that we kind of have to ask you. If you guys want to wait, I'm, I'm fine with that too.
Let's hear from, let's hear from Blythe. She's had her hand up, her arms getting tired.
Just, just two quick points. I don't disagree with John. It is very frustrating that we want to move these things forward and we're not able to, but I can tell you, if we had a shovel-ready sidewalk project right now, there's a shared streets grant on application. The state's basically giving out money right now. It has to be spent by the end of, of May for projects, you know, like what we're talking about, but we don't have a project ready to go. So that's a little frustrating. And then just the point I wanted to make on, on the money, perhaps maybe what would be willing, reasonable to do is give us a kind of a go-ahead green light that you're supportive of the idea or an upset limit of what to spend and we'll come back to you with the, the, the real numbers. Once we get them and you can give us the final lesson. We just wouldn't want to put out an RFP on the street without some understanding that that we'll be able to fund it. That's all.
That's reasonable. Let's, let's get a motion to that effect on the floor.
Question first, Walter.
Yeah, John.
Barry, we have a section of road with no sidewalk, for example. How do you do engineering to know what the sidewalk is going to cost? What's involved in, I've never heard of engineering for sidewalk. So what do you do to determine the, the soil conditions, the, the lot lines and all that? So you can actually do engineering rather than say this place needs a sidewalk, survey it and dig it and put it in. What, what's the engineering going to tell us?
Exactly. So basically that's the problem, John. We don't have the plans in place. I don't have a, a plan, let's say for sidewalks on Union Street. We, we need the engineering, the design done so that we can show the, be competitive in the grant process that we have this design. We're ready to go tomorrow to put this in.
You know, if, if you, if you want to look at Union Street as we did, you understand that the sidewalk in Union Street and, and the young man that was talking about that that lives there, that was looked at ten years ago. That's, that's involved crossing two rivers. Killing in thousands of feet of wetland, which is a state permit. It's so inconceivable, the cost, they decided not to even get into it.
I, I agree with you. So part of this project, we'll be looking at that. We got to look at our, Union Street may be a priority, but construction wise, it might never happen.
But you need engineering to say that Union Street is never going to happen. You need engineering for that?
Yeah, we need a little bit of homework on that one to show the people the right away, to show everything that's going on there, John. I think that's the problem. I think there's misconceptions that people think we can just run out and slap a sidewalk in.
I think you can show people Union Street and show them how it's absolutely impossible financially to ever put a sidewalk on Union Street. I mean, I don't, I don't want to spend fifty thousand on a study to say that we can't put a sidewalk, but.
John, it wouldn't, this, that wouldn't be a study per se for Union Street. The idea of the master plan is looking at what has been done before, prioritizing locations that we could put sidewalk, sidewalks in at a cheap, reasonable price. You know, I, the, the Complete Streets program came out with a whole bunch of wish list stuff that was, you know, that the baseline numbers for Union Street sidewalks are three million. That's just three million from the town. You know, the part of the gap analysis is prioritizing those areas, maybe near the schools where we're missing a short section of sidewalk and things like that, where we could easily get funding to put these type of products together. And then as you go down your list, we're going to have our major projects that, you know, those things might be twenty, thirty years out and may never even happen. So the, the idea is to get this all kind of wrapped together in one bundle for us. So we have a pool to look at. And so then when, when residents come to me and say, hey, why can't you do this? Well, I can say it's going to cost this amount of money. We don't have this done. So that's the whole idea of it. I mean, the driver for it was the ADA compliance, which we need. But then we have the ability to kind of parlay that into a bigger project and then kind of set us up for the future.
And it goes back to our study and how much do we charge someone for sidewalk? Unless you're digging what's underneath there, you have no idea what that sidewalk's going to cost.
If I, if I could jump in with two questions. One is Barry, that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have in the sidewalk fund, how much, how much sidewalk is that going to buy us?
Not a whole lot. I could eat up that, I could eat that whole thing up in repairs on, on Worcester Road. We might want to look at that as we look at that a hundred and fifty thousand and say, hey, can we take sixty thousand of it and actually do a design and a plan for a section of sidewalk somewhere and actually chase grant funding for it.
My second question is more to John and, you know, I mean, Barry and crew are coming together in front of us today with a proposal on how they see the future development of sidewalks in this town. If we don't go with their proposal, what, what's the proposal for sidewalk development in Norfolk?
Proposal was as we tried before and failed, which is doing an allocation and funding, just like for the streets. Have people, the, the money funded outside the budget, to have people put an X amount of thousands of dollars each year into a sidewalk fund, which was called, and put an X amount of feet of sidewalk. So the money is actually going to put in sidewalk, not for study, not for an engineering firm getting a hundred and ninety bucks an hour. It's actually putting in a sidewalk because the, the premise remains the same. An engineer cannot tell you what a sidewalk costs unless you go into it.
I have a plan.
So, so John, wouldn't it be easier to get a sidewalk fund approved if we had a plan on how we were going to execute it?
We have a plan together. They spent two years putting the sidewalk plan and they listed priorities of which.
That's not a plan, John. That's a wish list.
No, it was an actual plan. They spent two years on it. We have every street diagnosed in this town with sidewalk connectivity. And the town turned it down. That's why I'm saying if you go to that plan, there's a bunch of sidewalk priorities that are missing to provide the best connectivity. That was all done. We just never could get those people to put the money in.
Right. So when, when was that, John?
Probably nine, ten years ago. The committee was together for two years and I think it went to town meeting probably eight or nine years ago, the same.
As we've learned from our B one study, right, there's two thousand more people in town now, right, than there were ten years ago.
Exactly. So that's why I told Barry, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm studied up. And we took the people's money that are developing land, saying that we were putting in sidewalks, not doing the study, but I'd like to see some facts on exactly what funds were granted in the last number of years and how much they got and how many feet the sidewalk were put in for it. Rather than just pay our money for another sidewalk study. We're in the middle of a sewer study right now. And now we find out, we may get funding for something, but there's going to have to be a betterment charge to every single person the sewer line goes in front of and they're going to be forced to pay it if we go forward. So we've got this fancy study done, but there's a lot more involved that are going to go before the select board actually to try to make a decision if we even have the money.
John, that was actually part of my presentation of the night for our CIP for the Board of Selectmen. I think unfortunately to everybody's dismay, we're at that point, and, and at that point right now where we actually need to get a lot of these studies done because they hadn't been done and get them updated. So then we have, we actually know our numbers. We know everything. So moving forward, we can have a consolidated plan. You know, my drainage infrastructure is falling apart. I got, you know, I get roads falling apart. I got sidewalks falling apart. And unless we get a handle on what we have and some solid numbers, so we can do some, you know, some really educated planning, you know, we're just going to be kind of wishing in the wind for, for quite a while.
Like I said, Barry, I have no problem doing a study, although I don't think you can engineer and come up with a cost for sidewalk. You can take a guess, but as long as we're pretty sure that we're going to get funding and that's fine. I want another study going to be filed away like the sewer study from ten years ago that cost eighteen or twenty thousand dollars. Nobody even looked at that.
John, I, I totally agree with you because you know how, actually how many studies I've actually done in my former life that are now sitting on some, some town shelf, never being looked at it. I, I totally get that. And I want to be, I want to be able to implement a plan in a study and not, not just having collecting dust somewhere on a shelf.
Give, give us some history then. That would be great.
Not a problem.
It's almost eight thirty, Walter.
Yeah, I understand. And obviously this topic is taken up all the time between when we started in eight thirty. All right. So, so yeah, you were going to be quick, Barry, right? All right. So Blythe has put a proposal on the table that we authorize the, the expenditure of X dollars from the sidewalk fund to accomplish this study and then set a limit of no more than X. And then if it exceeds that, once they get the, the response to the RFP, they, they would come back and say, we need ten thousand more or whatever. So we could, the chair would entertain a proposal to that effect.
So moved with a limit of sixty thousand dollars?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. So we have a, a motion on the floor to authorize a max of sixty thousand dollars for this sidewalk study. And with the condition that if the, the amount exceeds that, that Barry and the DPW will be back to the board to request additional funds. All right. So we'll go with a voice vote. Mr. Weddleton?
No.
Okay, Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. Well, that was a quick one. Yeah. Let's see, eight thirty, nineteen Shire Drive, minor modification endorsement of site plan. Rich?
So I'm going to hopefully make this quick so we can get.
Promises, promises, yeah.
Yeah, all right. So the nineteen Shire Drive was approved by the planning board for a contractors headquarters for New England turf specialist. It originally came in as seven Phillips. So if we go, you hear nineteen Shire, in my ring, it's seven Phillips way. The, the planning board approved the project this past year into the permitting process between the planning board and then the zoning board appeals for special permits. Particularly related to the special permit for parking of the vehicles, the rear portion of the property. A little bit, the, the, actually it might help to, I'll put up the plan just for orientation purposes to as I'm talking. So I'm going to try and walk and chew them at the same time here. Was that the front of the building, the way they had it oriented on the approved site plan, it would be the, the side as you will look at. If you were to look at the site from the front of the lot, so it was, the side of the building was facing Phillips Way. And the, so needless to say, what ended up happening is the vehicles had to be in the rear portion of the lot, which necessitated some, at the time for the permitting, shrinking the building size to be able to make the site. which, uh, necessitated some, at the time to the permitting, shrinking the building size to be able to make the site work. And, um, so what was approved through the planning board? So if you see my cursor, this is the front of the building. And this is Shire now. It was Phillips Way before. So the, the way the special permit by law stipulates that the, the vehicles, the, the equipment have to be in the rear portion as it relates to the lock configuration, not how you lay out the building on the site. So what they had done, they had shrunk the building size from the original design to, um, make this accommodation on the site for the circulation. Now, when, um, the owner submitted to get the, uh, building designed with their, uh, manufacturer, they had used the original design, not the reduced size building. And so needless to say, um, the bolt didn't work on the site. So they're asking for, uh, a minor modification to essentially modify the parking in the rear and, um, put the original building back on, which is, it is a little bit bigger than the one that ultimately came through the planning board process, but shrinking the building wasn't related to the permitting process per se. It was more related to trying to put everything on the site.
Can you show us a drawing of, of what it would look like with the larger building?
Yeah, actually, uh, I can. Hold on a second. So this is the larger building.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so there's the change in the rear portion of the site. And that's what the notation is, is which necessitated this, this block wall in the back. Now, the plan hasn't been endorsed by the board yet. So the, what I'm proposing as a, as a process is to, if the board's comfortable with this change, modify it as a minor modification, which will be reflected on the endorsed plan. And then you would sign off on the endorsed plan. So that's part of it. Um, secondarily, uh, what's probably more important in some respects to the owner is that he's using his own crew to do the work right now. So he wants to be able to keep them working. Um, the original permit that was granted by the planning board required that a building permit be filed before site work can commence. So there's a second part of this, which was, would allow him to, um, continue to have his crew work to prep the site with construction observations by beta engineering. And then finish the plans up with the minor change, have the planning board endorse it, get them recorded with, uh, the registry deeds, and then he can go pull the building permit based on a revised play pool.
And one of the requirements of approving this revised site plan is to getting that, uh, retaining wall approved. And Phil has looked at that. Phil, can you comment on that, please? If he's still with us.
Yeah, I'm trying to. Oh, yeah. Okay. I thought I was muted. Uh, you know, um, so, yeah, I think, uh, I'm a little uncomfortable with the, uh, the, the stone, I mean, the, the boulder wall, just because uh, there isn't a real defined, um, engineering component to it. And uh, the proposal is to park significantly, um, significant vehicles above it. So I, I recommend that, uh, the board either approve the Mast DOT, um, gravity wall or a, an engineered wall system. So, um, I think there were two, um, Jim provided and I was provided another. So I think either one of those solutions is, is better than, than, um, what was, what was originally proposed.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the, um, the block wall that was submitted yesterday is the wall that the owner intends to go with now. Uh, and we would have stamped engineered drawings from the wall manufacturer to submit along with the modified site plan. And, okay, and Phil, that, that one that you've seen that Jim submitted, uh, would, would meet your approval?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. All right.
Good solution.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Rich, can you pull that up, please?
The, um, the new, the revised spec on the wall?
What's being proposed? Yes.
Jim, do I have, uh?
I believe it was forwarded to you from Dennis's office.
I'm here. I forwarded it yesterday in an email, but I'd be able to show it up on my screen. I don't know if I could show it on my screen.
Yeah, I could. Yeah, I could screen share with you as opposed to. You can, uh, so you should be able to screen share now.
And, and what is just below the wall? Um, I didn't see it actually. Is it? It's part of the same lot. What's that area that's just below the, the wall?
On, on the, uh, lower side of the wall?
Yes.
There's, um, currently an existing, uh, drainage swale.
Okay.
That was part of the, uh, the subdivision. So it's going to be just, you know, the toe of the wall would be just back from that, um, and then come up from there.
Can you, uh?
Okay. So we, we, uh, who, who's putting up the drawing of the wall?
Um, I have, I don't know how to transfer it. I don't know how to show you from my screen.
Okay. I'll, uh, I'll go back into the email then.
Kathy, go if you move your mouse.
Rich has got it. He'll show it to us.
Need a little music.
I, I have a, I have it.
You have it?
Yeah.
All right.
The plan or the music?
So, uh, screen share with you. Phil.
Okay.
All right, good. I'll stop now. Oh, boy. Don't tell me, yeah.
So that's, uh, they gave us a few pictures of them.
That's the type of wall. It wouldn't be anywhere near that height, though. No, uh, the wall's approximately six feet high at the highest point. Yep. Yep. And the blocks, I believe, are eight foot long and three foot high.
They're significant blocks. So can you see this?
Yep. Yeah, we can see it.
Yeah, these are the blocks.
Are they pinned or are they just placed on top of each other? Are they interlocked?
I don't know. These are, these are very heavy wall.
Okay.
This is the same wall we approved at eighteen Union, right?
Oh, okay.
I don't know if it's a, I'm looking at the specs right now. I don't know if it's a concrete.
It's a, it's a, it's a gravity type, um, you know, they, you start with big blocks on the bottom, then they get gradually smaller as you go up. So.
The vendor was MBO Concrete, so I'm assuming it's a concrete block.
Yes, they are concrete blocks.
And, and they can be stamped and certified.
Yes, we will get a, we will get a plan from MBO Concrete, um, that shows the, the wall design, the type of block for each row, and that will be stamped by a professional engineer um, from their office or that they have hired to, uh, design the wall.
And what's the highest point of the wall?
I believe it's about six foot high.
Yeah, six foot.
So again, for that, we're looking at, you know, two blocks, maybe three with, with one partially embedded. So.
Walter, are you going to make a motion or?
Well, let's see, let's go back. Uh, Rich, uh, I think, I think the motion that you're requesting is that, uh, we approve the, the, uh, changes to the building size and the parking layout and the wall as minor modifications to the site plan. And include, uh, also in that motion, allowance to have the, the, uh, owner begin, uh, site preparation prior to receiving a building permit. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
All right. So there's your motion.
Yeah. Well, contingent upon the submission of a engineered plan for the wall.
True. We have a second?
Second.
All right. Um, we have a motion on the floor made and seconded. We'll take a voice co, voice, uh, vote. Mr. Weddleton.
I.
Mr. Searle.
I.
Mr. Peck.
I.
Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Uh, Chair votes aye. All right. Anything else on nineteen Shire this evening? Hearing none, then we move on. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, Jim, thanks. Yep. Take care, Kathy.
You as well, sir. Thank you.
All right, uh, we have a few minutes here before our next item on the agenda.
Yep. So I got the zoning up on the screen.
Yep.
Hopefully you see it. Do you see?
Yep, we see it.
We see it.
Okay.
So what I wanted to, as I emailed the board earlier, is, um, really tried, I think probably jump over what I originally had drafted and go down to, uh, the changes that were brought forward by the, um, the building department to, relative to accessory buildings and swimming pools. And then, but let me just, uh, give a little bit of background before we get into that a little bit. Um, so the, um, issue came forward with, uh, accessory struc, accessory structure buildings that were, um, within the front yard setback on a few properties. They were issued, um, zoning violation letters. And the structures that we're talking about that really kind of spurred this along are really the huts that you've seen people put in for, um, they'll put their cars under them. Uh, they may store some material and so forth. So within the zoning bylaw, there are structure. So they are accessory building, um, and they were in, in the front yards on homes, uh, within the town of Norfolk. Um, so the, um, suggestion was, and the interpretation of the zoning bylaw was that, um, between zero and fifty feet, which is the front yard setback, um, these structures can't be placed. But then from fifty feet to the front edge of the, um, of the home, the, the principal building, a single family home, they could be. So we had a mix. So we had a conference call with, uh, the Chair, the Vice Chair, uh, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, as it relates to, uh, some present violations on some properties. And then taking a look at this, um, a little bit closer. I had presented a, a potential proposal at the December meeting. And I think the view at that point was, well, okay. I think some was like, wait a minute, the front yard, I look at the front yard as from the edge of the property, the street to the front of the house. So then that opened up a few more questions about interpretation of it. So what you have is before is a potential blending where, um, and the zoning board chairman, I forwarded his email. His recap of the conversation, just as we discussed this, was that if somebody wanted to put an accessory structure from really their front property line to the front of their house would be a special permit as opposed to a tiered system, basically, which would be, which is before you on the screen, nothing in the zero to fifty feet foot setback, front yard setback. But from the fifty foot setback to the house, you could put a structure, accessory building um, in that by special permit through the Board of Appeals. Similar, a little bit similar, but already existing language. I'm just going to scroll up just for background. We did a little bit more tightly regulate swimming pool locations. Um, where we did say, actually, that's not, sorry, up here. Um, this is the existing language. You know, you, you can't have them in that, that front yard at all. But behind that you can. And there are, I will say, there are some pools in town already that are, um, behind that fifty foot setback. And there's laws, different shapes and sizes of lots that we have in town. Now, when it comes to a corner lot, right now, we're not touching, we're not changing corner lots. So corner lots are going to have the same issue. Uh, they'll have a two, basically two front yard setbacks. So that remains as is. That's, we're not necessarily trying to solve all situations, but they'll have to deal with that. Potential similar problem is if you have a through lot, we do have some through lots, which basically end up having two front yards. So, you know, placing structures would be a little bit more challenging on those lots. But we're trying to see if we could come up with a reasonable approach as it, as it relates to these accessory buildings. And so that's, um, I know that, I know John had reached out to Bob. So a couple of question, or a couple of comments he had, then I'll open up for more discussion was it probably should say no accessory building shall be located as opposed to may. And then I think the same, uh, John, you probably, the same, um, critique of a special permit shall be requested.
Must be requested.
Yeah. So I want to.
Well, in addition to that, Rich, we got a, a late email from, uh, from the Chairman of the ZBA.
And then incorrect. And the Chairman from the ZBA thought was that if you have those little accessory one, uh, buildings that are small, you should be able to get within that front yard setback, but only via a special permit.
Right. So the, the language that you proposed is more, more restrictive than what the ZBA Chair would propose, right? He gives you a little more latitude. Under a special permit, you could put it in the, uh, in the setback area too. Okay.
Yes. So and, and just one last thing quick before we go. All right. I'm sorry. For open up is as far as schedule goes, uh, the warrant, the deadline is February twelfth. So you do have another meeting in between. And furthermore, you have, it's, it can act as a placeholder. So you still have time to vet the language a little bit here. So don't, I don't want you to think that, you know, it's thumbs up, thumbs down tonight as we talk about it. So. All right. Now I'll pause for comments.
I'll jump in. Why, why do we think it's appropriate to put accessory buildings, swimming pools in front yards in any scenario?
Well, uh, let me offer one thought. Uh, Aaron, I'm sure you've driven this road, uh, over towards Dover Center. There's a couple of houses there. If you look on your left side that are setback, maybe a couple of hundred feet from the road. And, uh, they have constructed garages, um, perpendicular to the house and the street at the side of the lot, uh, between the house and the street. And, uh, it looks pretty good. Uh, it, it's not a, uh, it's not four poles and a roof. It's an actual building. Um, and doesn't, doesn't really detract from the property. In fact, if they, they have constructed the, uh, the driveway uh, very nicely and landscaped it. It looks pretty good as an example.
And the, the challenge part, I guess I would say, Aaron, to answer this question is, um, I just want to talk about the accessory building for now, not necessarily the pools per se. But the, um, those little huts that people have put on, so these, these are in some instances, somebody has, uh, you know, they don't have a attached or detached garage. In some instances, somebody has, you know, they don't have a attached or detached garage. And they're looking for some shelter, and so that's why they're, they have them in their front yards. Some are pretty wooded and. They can probably exist and not be impactful to adjacent properties. Other cases, it probably becomes a little bit more obvious that it can be detrimental. But so that's the thought is one size doesn't fit all, but have some flexibility as far as. Allowing for these, but. A process which, you know, would more regulate. Site location and maybe aesthetics in the sense of maybe the screening and so forth.
So I guess, I guess, just to complete my thoughts on it, I don't think there's any scenario in which we should consider, well. I suppose any is a is a tough statement, I guess, maybe you have to go with special permit for swimming pool, I was gonna say, I don't think there's any scenario where we should be considering a swimming pool in the front yard. But you know, I guess to Walter's point, if you have a, if you have a piece of property where you have four hundred yards between the street and your house, maybe, maybe there is a scenario where that's reasonable. So I guess I'll, I guess I'll go with, you know, maybe by special permit. A review, these things should be considered, but I wouldn't. Consider them in the setback, they would be between the setback and the house.
And we give the ZB, under this language, we give the ZBA the chance to vet the individual situation.
Right.
Yeah, I I I prefer the the language that avoids placing these in the setback. But I don't know how about others, others feel.
I agree with that. It makes a lot of sense.
I like the boundaries Aaron just described. Be between the setback and the and the house.
John, what do you think?
I think the. Swimming pools is more difficult than the accessory buildings. The accessory buildings, as we talked about. Existing zoning says you can't put in the front setback, which means that if your house is setback a hundred feet. You could put a carport or a shed twenty feet in front of your house, which wasn't really the purpose of the zoning, so we'll interchange it. I always thought we're gonna use the plane of the house to being the front yard, because when you're talking about a front yard setback in a front yard. And it's not divined and so, and it can get tricky, so we had talked about using the front plane of the house and nothing goes in front of that. Except by special permit. For the reason Aaron said, some of these houses setback four hundred feet, that have a very fancy three car garage with a room over it. Can be set back two hundred feet in the front part of the lot and look very attractive.
Yep.
The pool just brings in a a different perspective, and I can't see any idea, any. Any circumstance that one would go. In the front yard, but then again, if it's covered by special permit and you put in there must and not may, then. Maybe that would be okay and left to the ZBA.
Yeah.
Certainly an improvement.
Yeah.
On John, let me just, in a second, on John's comment, so my original, my. Draft I sent out, I did reference about the front plane of the existing dwelling unit, now maybe that's a little bit too worried, whatever. But so what, and getting back from the billing department. They didn't really, they didn't use that term front plane at all, they used principal building. So, John, what's thought on maybe kind of blending the two, so to speak, the referencing it?
Same thing by definition, isn't it?
Yeah, I think, I think it is, but I mean.
This works.
Whatever's gonna be the most clear. So that ten years down the road, we have to enforce this, and we don't have to do an interpretation later.
And that's exactly the point.
Yeah. Okay, so good, principal building works?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, I will, I I do agree, this should be shall.
Or must.
I would say must.
Must.
Must, okay.
And. Yeah, go ahead, make that change there.
Oh, must doesn't make sense there, no accessory building.
No accessory.
Oh, shall, no, you did it the wrong point, that's right, yeah, shall, put the shall back in there, yeah. It's the next sentence down.
No, it had name there before, so now it's shall.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Special permit must be requested.
Yeah. There you go. Now, now, where where is the principal building going in?
It's in there.
It's in here already.
Yeah, okay, alright, yeah, 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 alright.
So I'll just change the same.
No, maybe locate a friend, that's fine, yeah.
No, you wanna change it, right?
No, not there.
That, well, that should be shall, just like we did up above.
Yeah. And then down below is the must.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
There you go, okay.
Alright, so I'll, I'll. If I could share this back with the chair, the. The ZBA and get his thoughts and have him either. He'll write you back or maybe jump on the next one, so you don't have to prove this tonight, so you got.
Right, okay.
Time to move.
As long as you understand that, Walt, because you're gonna be the one explaining it to the folks at town meeting.
I'm gonna be sick that night.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
Have setbacks changed over time and do setbacks from twenty years ago get married to a piece of property? Or do they, when setbacks change, do the new ones? Fall on all properties?
The setbacks are part of the zone district, Gary, so R1 has a certain setback, R2, R3.
Just asking if they changed over time, though, so twenty years ago, they were still the same as they are now?
Yes.
I'll take a look, I think they were from the inception that.
Conceivably, they could change over time.
They could, they could, no, you're right, but. I don't think, I think they've remained that way since the adoption.
Okay, they just haven't changed, it's not like in the same area, there's three different setbacks, that's all I was asking.
Yeah, so Walter, maybe we can, the policy discussion, all that, cause I know John's gonna be off now, maybe just, could we probably defer to the next meetings, that makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe before you folks go into the B1 zoning, a couple of pertinent things I was reading today.
Yeah.
The governor's plan. On affordable housing zoning went through the legislature and passed, and now he's about to sign it. And what that does is that changes the bar from zoning changes from two thirds majority to a regular majority. And the other part of the, a different plan that he may or may not sign, there's, there's, we used to call it. Smart growth, but the economic plan, the legislature signed and brought to him. Was that every town with a train station, and they listed Canton and other ones like that. Is now gonna be required to set aside an area around the train station. For dense housing that's allowed with no special permit. So the first thing will definitely affect. Going forward. I was kind of concerned that this thing may affect the Southwood property if they go for zoning change, because there were no specifics. In this six hundred page plan, which which would be another issue if they wanted to try to. Force in something that most of the folks did not want, but. Right now, I believe the the two thirds majority being eliminated is a done deal, because it was the governor's plan itself.
And the other one. I believe, I believe the language associated with the train station reads like this, again, as a summary. Requires one district of reasonable size within a half a mile of the station to allow multifamily housing without special permit.
But they didn't say the number or the amount or anything, right, Aaron?
No, of reasonable size.
Reasonable and reasonable units.
Yes. But I, the the point is, is that. You know, one, one of, well, I don't know what John's point is, I'll tell you what my point is in bringing this up and taking the mic from John. You know, that. We have many conversations about forty B around here, and and we hear a lot of complaints about why the state has enacted this law that impacts the development of a town like Norfolk. Right, wrong or different, the state did so. The state enacted forty B in nineteen sixty something. These two bills that John is talking about now are. Current, they're acting now, so instead of unwinding forty B regulations, the regulations are only getting to the point where they're further. Encouraging dense development near train stations, so in a world where some of the folks have suggested we fight forty B at the state level. Well, that fight just got harder. Significantly harder.
They also didn't say when they were talking about the zoning in a dense district, whether it was gonna be a twenty five percent affordable or. The town's ten percent or what, no specifics at all in that.
Yeah, they don't really talk about affordable housing, they just talk about multifamily housing, so they're, they're really just interested in dense density and afford and cost.
My main point was that when this comes to town meeting, your zoning changes in May. The new law will be signed in and effective, I would assume. Because it's on his desk now.
Okay. So is it?
The first, the one I think John is talking about changes it from a two thirds vote required to change zoning to a simple majority.
Correct.
I presume that we'll get some briefing on those those changes to the law. It'll come down through the, through the state to the towns.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, as we, yes, I mean, we'll. We'll have to get clarification from them regardless, so I don't know if Josh knows this up. I don't, Josh, I don't know if you're up to speed on that as of yet or not, or.
I think, I think the the general aspects of it. John and Aaron have covered pretty well, we're actually, as staff at MIPC, we're getting a briefing soon from our legislative staff in terms of the details of what's in that language. But the the broad strokes are exactly what just.
Okay, alright. Alright, so let me, we'll have to follow that, so when we, to make people aware, when we get to. Town meeting that the, it's potentially a two thirds vote, not a, I mean, sorry, majority vote, not a. Two thirds vote.
Yeah, I, I have one other tidbit to throw in there, which came out of our planning board reading files before we lose John, but. One of the notes in there was Milis is currently expanding their economic opportunity overlay district by expanding their mixed use development overlay district. So our neighboring town is, has found their mixed use development overlay district successful enough that they're expanding it.
That was last month, I think I put that in.
And also last month, as I recall, Gary, you put in, I think it was Walpole, it was looking at expanding their inclusionary zoning requirements.
That one I don't remember as well.
Depending on the number of units in a development, instead of going from ten percent, they were going to fifteen or twenty five or whatever.
That's right, they they had a a stepped requirement, I thought that would be of interest to us as well. Depending on the number of houses being built, the percentage changed.
So we're gonna, I'll just, I could update here, Walter, real quick on that, so. I went before the, well, you were there, Gary, obviously, you know, so. The Tom Claverton and Susan Jacobson from the Affordable Housing Trust, myself. Was before the CPC last week to ask for the blessing to fund. A new housing production plan for us, our our housing production plan will expire October of. Twenty twenty two, right now, we're in safe harbor till July of twenty twenty two. So we've asked to have them sponsor funding, which they agreed to do at the Maytown meeting to. Produce a new housing production plan, which that topic will become part of that conversation. We'll need to get that plan done. And certified, so that way, when twenty twenty two rolls around. We have a a certified housing production plan. There, that way, if depending on the forty B situation, then if we get something on the order of. You know, five percent, we can get safe harbor. If we get something on the order of ten percent, we could get two years, or. Who knows where we're headed, but if there's something that's even large enough, maybe it gets us to ten percent. We're on our way so we can be in safe harbor and. Get us closer to that that bar, that magic.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, the next item, John will be recusing himself, but before he goes, I'd just like to say for the. Topic that we started off the agenda with, namely, the Associate Planning Board member. My proposal is that we would take a vote on this at our next, as a first item on our agenda for the next meeting. So that. Our two applicants will know that by the end of the meeting next time, we will have chosen one and. Unfortunately, turned down the second. Alright, let's move on, we have a B1 zoning study review. And discussion and vote zoning amendment recommendations. And I'm not sure who's leading this, is it, is it? Rich, or is it Josh?
It will be, it will be. I would say more or less a combination, but what I'll do is. I'll probably be more. Moving in and out of the presentation as we go along, I'll, I'll have Josh lead it, the discussion, so. Josh, it probably makes sense that we'll screen share with you and. Go through the presentation.
And we have our, our, our committee with us this evening, do we not, Kevin?
I see, from the B1, I see Gary Sullivan, Ed Hadad online. I know Susan Klein had mentioned that she probably. Wouldn't be able to make it, her daughter.
Yeah.
Commitment, I don't see, she'll see here yet. Actually, Ali could be behind Gary's shoulder, I don't know. But.
Okay, alright.
She's downstairs.
Oh, she's downstairs, okay, alright, well.
I could get her.
It's totally up to her.
Up to you guys, yeah.
Josh, turn the the key over to you, so if you wanna. Look through the screen sharing.
Well, great, thank, thank you, Rich, thank you, board, for having me back, Josh Fiala from MIPC, happy to be with you all again. So we have returned back with a presentation which is very similar in. Content to the presentation Rich and I shared with you at your previous meeting. Except as as discussed and requested by the board, we have a little bit more context and background. Associated with the recommendations for B1, which are are taking shape. And so I'll walk you through that now, not not belaboring it, because I think a lot of it is information that you all have have seen, and of course, the B1 committee members have seen as well. But I'll just, I'll go through that now. So this gives a brief overview and recap of the the process to sort of get us to this point, just a reminder of of what what that process has looked like, and then. Goes through the recommendations one by one with some justification for them, and then outlines the next steps.
So just. Online, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention it. Go ahead, sorry, Josh, sorry.
Just to leave this on the screen for a moment, a reminder of the vision statement for the B1 committee, that was. Really the the guiding light for that work with the committee, which put in a lot of time and effort. And centered around the notion of. Planning for an enhanced and financially viable and diverse mixed use talents center. With mixed use being the sort of operative phrase there, and looking at the zoning in particular to. Encourage mixed use development that would lead to a. You know, town center that town can be proud of, that's pedestrian friendly, walkable, compact and vibrant, so. That's, that's really where the efforts have focused. And this this vision state, or the mission statement to the committee is up on the town's website, and if people want to take a closer look at it. The B1 committee and the planning board have both been intimately involved in. Meetings since about the beginning of twenty nineteen. And those meetings have occurred pretty regularly with community meetings interspersed within the process there. And those meetings have occurred pretty regularly with community meetings interspersed within the process there. We also had a community survey, which was a part of the process to get as much of the community engaged in this work as possible. And that all led to a report from M A P C towards the end of last year. Well, I guess the end of 2019. Sorry, we're in, we're in a new year now. So all these references. The Planning Board was leading towards a town meeting vote in the fall of 2019. Except that, that we learned at that time, there was a lot of community apprehension and the decision was made to continue the conversations and really to roll up our sleeves and think about the details of the recommendations. So that led to a series of B1 Committees over the course of 2020. And then led us back to the Planning Board with the set of recommendations, which we have before you the last couple of meetings and sort of culminating this presentation tonight. So it's, I guess, all of that to say that it has been a detailed process, a detail oriented conversation, which has involved you all and the community. And hopefully, hopefully, everyone can trust in that process and see that this, these aren't ideas which have come from out of the blue, and they've really been thought through and considered from a lot of perspectives. The previous recommendations were more extensive. If you think back to what we were talking about in that fall of 2019 timeframe, we had, we had more, more ideas and we're in hindsight, perhaps being a little aggressive with some of them in terms of where the community was at and what they were feeling comfortable supporting. But though you can see the range of those on the screen, the the heart of those ideas, I think, are still retained in our recommendations today. But the, what we've tried to do and what we heard feedback from the the community about was providing more protections to the town than than were evident to the community members in this original set of recommendations and really of trying to avoid and make it clear to community members that unintended consequences would be minimized in this set of changes. So that's really been the the focus of the the revised, from this set of recommendations to the revised set of recommendations. We're still trying to encourage mixed use development as the core and center point of these recommendations. But doing it in such a way that the the community can feel reassured that there won't be, you know, other, other things that happen that we're not thinking about that would be a risk or detrimental to the town center. And specifically, these were some of those apprehensive comments that we heard at that timeframe. So not enough protection. And that ranged from sort of the scale of development to the potential number of new units, the building height, potential impacts related to the residential production, the parking spaces and the ability to have enough parking in town center. Concerns about addressing affordable housing in the town and not not really getting at that core issue of vulnerability to 40B. And that the recommendations should focus more on the commercial side of those mixed uses and less on the residential. So we've taken these to heart and really, a lot of the technical analyses we went through with the B1 Committee over the last year were focused on trying to get better answers to those questions. So out of those recommendations, the the more comprehensive list that we had previously, those highlighted in blue on the screen now are are the core, we think the core of making a positive impact in terms of encouraging positive mixed use development in the town center. While reducing the set of recommendations to such a place where where we feel like those those protections are are a little more secure and the unintended consequences are minimized. So that includes increasing the residential density, leaving the building height in terms of the number of stories, but making sure that the designs have enough flexibility in terms of the measurement and feet. Making consistent the build to line with the setbacks, providing some flexibility to achieve the density increase with a reduction in shared parking. And then making sure that the design guidelines are you know, used and known about. So I'll go through those in more detail now with just laying out what what the recommendation looks like in terms of the change in the language and the summary for it and justification as well. So there's 10 items in total. The dotted line, the five above the dotted line are the ones that I just walked through, which are, I think, the core features of these recommendations. The bottom five are I think in some cases, kind of administrative cleanup type features and in other cases are less impactful, but also just good to have. So we've included them in the recommendations. But but I don't think the the bottom five are as critical, but I think they're they're good to include in this set. The top five are really what's, in my opinion, moving the needle in terms of encouragement of mixed use development in the town center. So just walk through those one by one. So number one is updating the zoning boundary to change the business core sub district boundary. And so the B1 District is, as you all know, is divided into two sub districts, the B1 inner core or business core and the B1 outer core or outside the business core. And so those two districts were suggesting a revision to the boundary of those districts to focus the zoning recommendations on the areas where we think that it will be impactful. So this is, this is one of those protection measures that we're talking about to reassure people that the the zoning changes will not have unintended consequences to produce sort of large amounts of units on a large amount of acreage. So what we did in the, as a part of this process, we had done this susceptibility to change analysis in the parcels within the town center. So green is, in our opinion, based upon characteristics of the parcels, more likely to change in the the near term. Yellow is changes likely in the longer term. And then the red is, is, in our opinion, change is not likely to occur on those parcels for any number of reasons, the ownership, the recent investments in those parcels, the type of development that's on those parcels. And so what we tried to do is refine the B1 core sub district so that it more tightly encompasses the parcels which are change more likely in the near term or change more likely in the long term. And just to eliminate those parcels which show up in red on this diagram, which is not changing, parcels which are unlikely to change anyway. And I think that was causing a lot of concern for people because they saw that see the town center district and a lot of acreage in the town center. But this ensures that the changes that we're talking about apply only to the new core area. So here you can see those sub districts as they're depicted in the current zoning. And this would be the revised, the proposed revision for the darker area, which is the B1 core business district, sub district. And so it really is a, is a matter of tightening up that sub district. It gets a little bit longer and brings some of the outer, outside the business core into this new core area on the east side of Main Street. And that I think also responds to the diagram I just previously showed you. So this would be the new depiction. Good, Rich.
No, no, go ahead. Never mind.
This, this just shows you diagram of of if this proposed change were to be accepted, how those new sub districts would be depicted. And so it includes if, just to clarify, yeah, based, I think maybe, Rich, this is what you were going to insert. Based on the meeting we had with you all last and showed a revised boundary such as this, we did include the corner of Boardman Road and Main Street in the Business Core Sub District. And we did include the parcel, which is first across the rail tracks as you cross Rockwood Road from Main Street. So this, this, I think is is really a measure to provide that reassurance that this, as the diagram previously showed, this is where we've always conceived of the focus in terms of encouraging mixed use development in the town center. And this just makes the zoning reflect those intentions. So that's exactly what I've spelled out here on the slide. The intent of this change is really to focus the zoning changes on the parcels where they're intended to impact what we, what we've been considering as those focal areas all along. Reducing the overall acreage impacted by the zoning changes and therefore providing reassurance that those unintended consequences people were concerned about would be limited. So that's, that's the the first sort of lane of the groundwork of these changes. So then the the changes subsequently, which I'll describe for the most part, apply to this inner core business sub district only.
Did you, you want, so Walter, you want to go through each of the five and then and then go back comments from the committee and the board?
Yeah, yeah, let's just go through it. Sure.
Okay. So this, this would be the first such change, which applies to that new boundary only. And this is a change to the building height. And just again, a reminder, previously, we were advocating for or recommended a three and a, a change to three and a half stories, which was a little too much in terms of what we were hearing back from the community. So we're suggesting three stories, which is what the current zoning is, be retained as the the height. But that the increase happened in terms of the the measurement of feet. So currently, the zoning allows extending the building height by special permit to 46 feet to the peak of the roof for the purpose of accommodating roof, roof lines or or other height needs. Looking at the the heights of the buildings and wanting the flexibility for a developer and their design team to provide a reasonable ground floor height and a roof pitch within that distance. We're suggesting that the the height of 46 feet be allowed by right without a special permit. So that's just a part of the zoning to make that work better for the design of the buildings. And three stories would remain. And so the intent here is really to provide flexibility to fit all of the design elements of a building that's attractive and proportional within that envelope, the height envelope, while also encouraging a generous ground floor commercial space, which we think is a big part of what the the town's after in terms of that vitality in the town center. And you can see here, the diagram on the screen is 46 feet from the ground floor or from the grade to the peak of the roof, which is what the regulation would stipulate. And it isn't, I don't think these numbers are out of control. It's a 12 foot floor to floor of the ground floor, 10 foot floor to floor for the two residential stories above. And then a roof, which is at a pitch of five to 12. So those are, those are outrageous figures. And I think this diagram helps to illustrate, at least for me, that this is a change, which really is that just getting this regulation in line with the ability to design a three story building, which would work. And, you know, give them the ability to not have a building which is out of proportion in some way, just to avoid a special permit. So that that's, that's what this is all about. Hopefully, that's pretty straightforward and and it eases off of what I think we heard a lot of concern about before, which was that extra half story, which would then, you know, in this diagram, I think, as we were showing in some of the previous illustrations, it would result in perhaps some dormers in the roof line. It might, it might, you know, show up to that half story would show up in that way. There might be some windows and the gable ends of those gables which are facing the the street in this diagram. So tho- those are the types of things which are not allowed because you're just at a straight three stories now. And the residential density increased to 16 units per acre. This is, the current language is that the residential density shall not exceed the ratio of 16 bedrooms per acre, which you know, it's not specifically laid out as units per acre, but it would probably average out to about eight units per acre. So you are effectively, depending on the bedroom mix, of course, that the change from the current regulation to the new regulation isn't exactly one to one, but could be imagined as as perhaps in the neighborhood of a doubling of that residential density. And in the the financial feasibility modeling that we did with the B1 Committee over the summer, we found that this was one of the critical features of moving the mixed use development for town center properties in the whole intention of encouraging that type of development. This was one of the concrete features of improving that viability. So I think the the question isn't whether or not it's needed. I think it's completely necessary. The question in my mind is just whether or not this is is still enough to improve that viability so that you start to see those investments. But I think this is, this is a number which hopefully the community can feel comfortable with. And it's a number which is is still below what you see for like the, we just had discussed in previous meetings, the 40R District, which has a minimum density of 20 units per acre. So those types of smart growth features, we're moving in that direction in terms of the density allowed. But 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 I don't think this is an overreach in any stretch of the imagination in terms of the appropriate level of density. And you can see here the a snapshot of that financial feasibility analysis, which we had prepared with the B1 Committee, which looked at individual variables. So increasing the building height in the number of feet, that that what I just outlined in the previous recommendation, that was a plus. Increasing the height to three and a half stories, that was also a plus, but we're not, we're not doing that anymore. So we do need to get some more of these other increases. So increasing the density to 16 units per acre did enhance the financial viability. And then also decreasing the parking requirement was another way to enhance the financial viability. And and we're, we're also not recommending that. So the I, my feeling is that out of those set of changes which move toward financial viability, we have to provide something within that set. And the density, the density is the one of those characteristics where it's, I've always said that it's very difficult for anyone, even a a design professional to walk down the street and say, yes, I see that project. I I know that it's 12 units per acre. I know that one's eight units per acre. I know that one's 17 units per acre. So it's, it's, it helps the financial viability, but it helps in such a way that it does not impact the the character of the town center, which is so sought after. And then while we are not changing the residential requirement, parking requirement from one and a half, which it is today, to 1.0, which was one of our previous recommendations, that stays just out as at one and a half. We do think that it would be warranted to provide some flexibility on the parking in the shared parking portion of the bylaw, which today still requires, even if the shared parking reduction is justified, it requires that the land for that parking be held, which isn't truly a benefit to increasing the density of the property or or to the financial viability of the project. So we're suggesting that the shared parking regulation would be modified to allow fif- allow up to 15% of that, which can be proven out to be a necessary reduction, to be not reserved or, you know, left vacant in any way. So that portion of the property could be used for, you know, additional portion of a building. It could be used for satisfying some of the other landscape requirements or whatever it may need to be. And so parking, of course, is not a parking is not free, as they like to say. And any amount of parking that's provided does impact the bottom line of a development proposal. And it impacts the density which can be fit onto any given property. So there's trade offs that exist. And this is one way, while while we heard a lot of apprehension about there not being enough parking over the long term in terms of the town center. And if the town center is really successful, which we all want, this is a way we think that the parking reduction can be justified in those, that sharing of uses. And then you're also maintaining the one and a half parking spaces per unit which you have today. And then the recommendation for the design guidelines, which the Planning Board has already voted to approve, would basically just be to get them more concretized in the zoning language itself. So this would be a suggestion to include them as the instruments of review and the site plan review by law or in the design review boards language. So that I I think is a pretty straightforward recommendation. And then the design review guidelines, of course, help with the shaping of the specific characteristics of that building height, which would be increased to 46 feet or of the density, which would be increased to 16 years per acre. So tho- those go hand in hand.
Have they been updated?
No, it's, it's a little bit of we're, we're, we're using our time wisely. And as as soon as this looks more like a sure thing in terms of the recommendations advancing in this form, we would, we would go ahead and do that. But we have not yet. But you can actually see in the the images that I grabbed here, some of those things. But you can actually see in the, the images that I grabbed here, uh, some of those things that I was mentioning before, that's exactly what would need to be uh, modified. So those, those diagrams uh, show, do show that three and a half story uh, building orientation. And so that, those would be the adjustments, that those would come down to the three-story height, like I showed on the previous diagram in this presentation. Uh, just to make sure that those, that confusion isn't there.
Yep.
And then these are the, the last five, and I, I'll go through these. There's one slide per each and they're, they're pretty quick, but the making consistent with the build-two line, and this again applies to the B one core only. The, the build-two line doesn't even exist in the, outside the core sub-district. But the build-two line is six, between six and nineteen feet is where the front edge of a building needs to land on the site. And then the, currently the front yard setback is zero. So that's just inconsistency. We think it could be cleaned up by making the front setback six feet. Then uh, overall, we've, we've talked about in this process, encouraging people uh, to visit the town center either by foot or by bike uh, into, in thinking about infrastructure improvements that could help that happen over the longer term. But also if people do uh, hop on their bike and get to town center and, and then in the process of doing, don't end up using any parking spaces uh, for a car. They should have a place to park their bike when they arrive. So right now the, the um, regulations are one parking uh, space for a bicycle. So a bike, a place to lock your bike to. Uh, one per every twenty vehicular spaces. And for some sites, uh, there's might only be twenty vehicular spaces. So that might only mean one bike parking space. So we'd like to suggest reducing that ratio to one per five, uh, which will give you a little healthier supply of, of places to place bikes if, if that uh, start to, if that trend starts to get moving and people riding their bike and to use the benefits of town center, which is a good thing on any number of levels. Then um, adding a few uses and clarifying a few of the uses, just to uh, look at the uses that are allowed uh, for commercial ground floor spaces to provide as many opportunities as possible to make those spaces successful and viable. So this would include, in addition to dance, exercise and aerobic studios, expanding that to wellness studios. Uh, and then also adding shared work facility, um, which, which we believe as, at once we're through this uh, COVID nineteen period, would come back as a, a viable town center ground floor use. And um, on, in a similar vein, thinking about the uses which are currently allowed, which are actually um, counter to the vision uh, that's been put forward by the town for the town center. And those include limited motor vehicle sales and uh, future gasoline and diesel fuel filling stations. Of course, there are existing uh, current users i- in terms of gas stations. Uh, and this would be uh, a, adjustment to the regulations that would apply to future. Uh, you know, the addition of new uh, gas stations or limited motor vehicle sales. And I, and I think um, hopefully we can all agree that more of those types of uses in the town center are, are not where, where we would like all this to head. So it's just good to have the zoning reflected that. And then the last item is the um, planned multi-lot development, PMLD, language, which is throughout the bylaw. And um, we, we found that uh, you know, even from the start of our review of the zoning bylaw, back at the beginning of this process, to be a little bit confusing and cumbersome within the bylaw. It's been used once, uh, as I understand it. Um, and it's not likely to be used again. And so uh, striking all of those um, references would just, would, would help to clarify things, I think. And then just to highlight again, items that had previously been contemplated, they're not in this set of recommendations. Uh, the affordable housing, we, we were uh, had discussed impro- increasing that to fifteen percent. That's going to remain the same under this set of recommendations at ten percent. The uses, um, we had discussed any number of ways to change the way that uh, mixed use is considered or defined and um, have decided to um, leave the current language as it exists. Um, uh, you know, we, we did not find a, a better answer, in my opinion, to the current language. Building scale, um, in terms of the building footprint, there's no change on that. Fifteen thousand square foot maximum um, is sufficient. The residential parking, no change from the one and a half per unit that's, that there is today. And then the building height as measured in stories remains as the three stories, uh, just as it is today.
Uh, just, just go back one slide, uh, that last point. Um, I'm, I'm uh, violate my own rule and comment now. Um, the uh, there is a change there. The building height for the, it's allowed by right now. That's what you're proposing, I should say. So that's a change, right? Not the number, but the allowed by right as opposed to special permit. And, and secondly, the, the three stories is now allowed um, to be shown on the front of the building as opposed to the present um, requirement, which I believe is that third story is encompassed within the roof. So there are changes there.
Got noted. I, I can adjust that last thing. And I think that um,
Yeah, by the way, by the way, uh, we looked at the uh, building at eighteen, eighteen Union Street, uh, the height above grade is forty-one feet, four and a half inches, four and a quarter inches.
To the peak?
To the peak of the roof, yeah. Forty-one feet, four and a quarter inches. Right, Rich?
Right, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that, uh, that's a fair critique that that probably should. Maybe reword it perhaps, or, yeah.
Well, in all honesty, it was, I added that bullet at the last minute because I, I think that the move from three and a half to three was, was a significant one, at least in my view. But um, you're right, buil- building height as an overall topic is being modified. So I can just, I can strike that bullet if it's confusing.
Well, you, you're right. You can, you can wordsmith it later, but you know what the point is.
It's not the building height that's staying the same. It's the number of stories, Josh.
Right.
The building height is actually changing from forty to forty-six. The number of stories is remaining the same.
Yeah, but it's, it, it's also changing the configuration of how those stories are, are to be made available.
Well, for, for, not to, not to wordsmith it, but you're right. You could say stories remain the same.
Right, except the way those stories are be made available isn't qualified in the zoning, Walter.
Well, it isn't, uh.
There's no words, there's, there's no words in the zoning that are being changed.
It would be in the design guidelines.
Right, except we don't have any. So there's no change.
I beg your pardon?
I, so we don't have any design guidelines, right? So there's no, I, my, my point is, is there's no change to the number of allowed stories in the zoning language. The number of allowed stories is still three.
How we measure is changed.
I, I think that's being a little bit um, disingenuous, but. It, it's hi- it's really how the three stories are expressed, but it's changing.
Right.
Which is what the design guidelines clarify.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the zoning change as well, though, because it is to remove, well, yeah.
Okay.
We'll get, point taken, right?
Yeah, point taken. Move on, right?
So yeah, next step, so. Yeah, so the continue, yeah, this, this way you can read it, that uh, so as I mentioned, uh, just briefly, I think before Josh got on, we talked about the Arizona bylaw. So the warrant, um, you know, the, the two-twelve is the deadline. Um, there is um, you know, op- they, they can arrive on the warrant as placeholders. And then there's a little bit of time before they become the final language. So one of the things that uh, I mean, we might have the final language by two-twelve, so it might be moot point, but um, if not, there's still a little bit of room to make some adjustments to it. The one thing I suggested, Walter, that we talk a little bit tonight, and then maybe even the next meeting, is the public hearing for the zoning changes. You know, they don't, don't need to necessarily come right away. Um, the final warrant gets signed in the beginning of April. So for example, you could schedule the public hearing on these zoning changes, but the outreach to the other boards and committees could happen ahead of time. So when you arrive at the public hearing, if need be any adjustments, you've already gotten some additional feedback, where we may be either good to go or, or aware of things that may need to be looked at before the public hearing. So that way, that evening um, makes it just a little more efficient that if adjustments need to be made, they can be as part of your recommendation or not. So just one possible approach.
Rich, I want, I want to jump in there because I think it's really important. And I think it's a lesson we've learned over the last two years. I, I think the constant manipulation and massaging of the language is extremely detrimental to the success of this, of this proposal, right? All it does is raise the alarm. It, 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 it constantly shifts the end goal. It, it constantly allows people to criticize what we're doing and make it, makes it look like we're not confident in what we're doing. I think it would be much better to, to vote on, commit to language and stick with it in our public presentations and our presentation to the boards, right? I mean, if, if we need at the end, we need to make some manipulation to the language to accommodate the recommendations and discussions we've had, so be it. But I, I, I just, one of the things we've learned over the two years is, is changing the language every time we have a meeting. Just doesn't allow constructive, productive progress.
Yeah, so I, my intent was exactly what you said. So if you didn't interpret what I just said to be that way, then I concur what you just said. That, that, that was what my, I was intending to propose, so.
Well, um, it would seem that then that the next step or one of the next step as, is number two here, which is draft specific language. If, so we can look at that language at our next meeting.
Correct, yep. And so the um, so.
Assuming, assuming there's some general agreement that what's being presented is
Yeah.
What needs to be drafted, right?
True, true, uh.
Can you shift back to the slide with the ten I, uh, ten, Josh? That way we can uh, what I like to do is just uh, you know.
There you go.
Yeah, so the, so I think this slide is, is where we want to kind of at least have the discussion. So really go through them in numerical order. The, you've heard the presentation on the boundary. Oh, I see a hand already by Kevin. Kevin?
Kevin?
There we go. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Uh, very quickly, just to add on to Josh's very comprehensive outline. Uh, first and foremost, uh, Gary, I noted your dissatisfaction with the salary of the planning board. We will be taking it up on select one meeting next time and hopefully get a nice percentage added on there for you.
I feel it should be double.
It, a bold, go ahead and throw a percentage on there if you'd like to what you're currently making, absolutely. Um, after getting the notice today about the potential uh, bill that we're going to be assigned by the governor, we did some deep dive into um, the language that's associated to it. And in section three A, I read an MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size. In which a multifamily housing is permitted as of right, and it goes on to say down in section I, and also have a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre, subject to any further limitations imposed by section forty of chapter one thirty-one and title five of the state environmental code. So if we look at that, identifying that this new district that may become a reality for us need to implement, uh, must have a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre. Uh, what's being proposed here accommodates for that. Uh, so I thought that was important to point out as we think about the long-term requirements that are coming down the pike. Additionally, I wanted to h- highlight, um, if I am able to share my screen, Rich, do you have the power to give me that?
I, I can, yeah, just uh,
All right, can everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Um, I don't know if you guys can read the stats here, but I do just want to quickly highlight, this is a map of all of the commuter rail stations and an analysis of the density around said stations. As we talk about what this bill is aiming to do, obviously it's aiming to allow for multi-uh, family development around these rail stations. I quickly just wanted to follow along our commuter line to highlight what that looks like in terms of the stops on our line, starting at Dedham. If you look at Dedham here, you can see that the average density around their rail station is two units per acre. Coming down to Islington, one point four units per acre. Norwood Depot, four point one units per acre. Norwood Central, three point one. Windsor Gardens, albeit kind of unfair, three point seven. Plintonville, one point six. Walpole is listed as one point eight, but I imagine that's going to go up to flipping forty as soon as they update all the development that's been done around their station. Uh, it doesn't look like it's updated just yet, but even still, it's at one point eight without most of it. I'm going to skip over Norfolk for a second to go down to Franklin Dean College at three point five. And then I'm going to go back to Norfolk, zero point six units per acre. I'm not saying that this means that we necessarily need to have development, but these kind of efforts and these bills are aimed at communities like ours. So I think it's important that we take whatever proactive steps we can to stay ahead of these things before we're required to come up with some kind of short-term plan uh, as a requirement from the state or be in an even worse position uh, with a project that doesn't necessarily make sense for our community. So just wanted to point that out with some context into what's coming down the pike and where we stand compared to the other communities that have these types of uh, rail stations.
Kevin, uh, the, the proposal on the table that we have here is sixteen uh, u- units per acre, which seems to qualify based on that new law. Uh, does that new law require a certain acreage?
It just says a reasonable size. There is no definition as to what that means.
Yeah, okay.
So I think what, what they're intending is that, you know, you need to back into fifteen units per acre, right? If you have limitations on the site that hinder you from being able to accommodate for fifteen units per acre, whether it be per septic, whether it be for parking, whether it be for whatever, you have to back into that fifteen units per acre.
Yep, yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, and that each size is different based on the community, right? And, and a, an appropriate-sized development for Dedham Station is in all likelihood, much more dense and large than an appropriate-sized development for a Norfolk train station. And so to put a size on it would be detrimental.
Well, very close to the uh, to the uh, station there at one twenty-eight, I mean, there's all kinds of apartments there. I'm surprised at the, at the low number of density.
So um, I, I think Kevin, so that, that bubble circle was a half mile from the station.
Okay, all right, yeah, all right.
It, it kind of ge- it gets to what Kevin talked about as far as this new requirement within a half mile. So
Yep.
So it's uh,
But, and just to, just to further that conversation, reading the language that the, the threat in there is, is that funding for infrastructure and housing programs, we pulled from towns that don't comply, right? So we had a nice, healthy, half-hour-long conversation earlier in this conversation about how wouldn't it be great to get infrastructure funds from the state for sidewalk development? Well, and as soon as this bill's passed, it's going to be hard to do for Norfolk.
Were, weren't you saying, Aaron, that the um, that radius of a half a mile? Um, wasn't there some stipulation around the language you were reading, where it doesn't have to be right on top of the center or uh, the rail stop?
It said that the multifamily district had to be within a half-mile radius of.
Within, so.
Okay, can we go back to the next step slide, which is where we were?
Yeah, the top ten?
Uh, next steps, no, it was. You want, you want to uh, you want to go to the top ten?
Yeah, I think we, I think we moved beyond the next steps and we moved into discussion of the items, right?
Yeah, the, yeah, the ten.
All right, fair enough. While you're queuing up the, that slide with the top ten, uh, are you? All right. Fair enough. While you're queuing up that, that slide with the top ten, uh, are, who, who is going to write the, the actual zoning language for each of these proposals?
A combination of Josh and myself.
Okay. All right. So you'll have them for next, next meeting.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Back to this slide.
So we'll get a, you know, thought consensus on number one from both, uh, again.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah. So I, I got a couple of comments in there. I, I think. One, I, I don't know, Josh, I'd be interested to hear your opinion on this, but I noticed the MBTA lots were included in the district.
Yes.
Um, might be interesting to take them out so as not to encourage development on those lots. I don't know, thinking out loud is one thought. Uh, second thought is, is, uh. I strongly oppose the addition of the property north of the train tracks on Rockwood. Uh, I think that building's an appropriate size and transition into the neighborhood. I think the train track becomes a nice boundary to the district.
Well, I, I disagree with that one because I think that building would ultimately. It, it's, 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 uh, described as residential on the tax rolls in the assesses office, but it's really a mixed units use property now. It has a couple of offices and a couple of apartments. And could easily be turned into a restaurant. So I, I'm not for excluding it.
Or it could just as easily stay as it is functioning, successful as it has been. So my last, last thought is, is there's a couple of properties on the left-hand side of the district, uh, namely the, the post office, the lot next to it and the, the lot at the corner of Boardman and Main. Um, I, I again feel strongly that the lot at the corner of Boardman and Main should not be included. Uh, I think it's a good transition into the neighborhood, the residential neighborhood. The, uh, the other two lots, I think it could, I could go either way on. Um, but I would propose a compromise to keeping those two lots in the district with the removal of the other two lots that I think, uh, extend the district a little further than it needs to.
So I think, just to clear, I think that's what was shown, right? So. So the corner lot was, uh, in the B one.
So just go, just go to the next slide. So if, I don't, can somebody draw? This is something in a point where they can draw on the screen. Right? So if the, the property to the north of the train tracks on Rockwood, right, I would propose getting rid of that one, correct? And then the property all the way to the left, the leftmost property, I would propose taking out of the district.
Okay.
Otherwise, and then I, 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 I see some value in not including the MBTA stations, but maybe I'm not thinking that one through, uh, completely.
Well, if you, if you want to, uh, exclude the, what is called the Frank Gross property there, you will not have my vote. That's just the way I feel. That's how strongly I feel about that one.
Right. So as you, as you just, um, just for context here, we know that at least John has abstained from this discussion. So the ultimate, at the end of the day, recommendation will be of four planning board members. So, um, I suppose it wouldn't be bad to get an idea of where we might be headed. So we could either craft.
Through the chair, Walter Byron, would Peter Diamond be able to make a comment?
Uh, certainly, Peter.
I agree with Walter. I think these two properties should stay as presented on this map. The one at the corner of Boardman is already built to that six to nineteen feet build line. So it's kind of fits in with what you're trying to design downtown. And the change from B one to outside the core, I think would make that a non-conforming property. And then the second property that's right over the tracks known as Frank Gross's property, I think that should stay in the B one core. I agree with Walter that it's a good location to, um, put a mixed use building in there, including a restaurant being that it's so close to the tracks. Thank you.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, we've, we've discussed these ins and outs of, in the, at our last meeting, and I thought we'd come to agreement as to where the boundary, the new boundary should be, which is what's displayed here. And I'm surprised, Aaron, that you're raising these, uh, eleventh hour changes or proposed changes.
Uh, I, I didn't know we came to a conclusion on it.
Uh, well, that, that's just my impression. I don't know about the other members, but that's how I feel. When we walked out of the last meeting discussing this, I thought we'd agreed that's, that was.
That was my understanding as well. Cause we'd modified the inner core because we'd included the meeting house because it wasn't on there, the Frank Gross property and so forth.
I agree. I remember the discussion.
I remember discussing it, but there were no conclusions drawn after our last.
That's, that's true. I, I guess you couldn't, you can see, we didn't vote on it. We, we all discussed it and I thought that was, we had consensus.
Okay. All right. Uh, so perhaps.
Sounds like I'm a minority anyway, so let's move on.
Okay. All right.
You gave them an.
Aaron, your thoughts are always welcome. It's just sometimes I don't agree with them. And I'm sure sometimes you don't agree with everything I say, so.
All right. So, uh. We, there were two building height, um.
I'm okay with the change.
That's fine.
I'm okay with the change as long as you describe it correctly, that it's a forty-six feet by right now, uh, as, as proposed, as opposed to, uh, by special permit and that the three stories are, are going to be, uh, in one facing of, of the building as opposed to the third story being within the roof. As long as you describe it correctly, I'm okay with it.
All right. We will, we will, that will be.
Oh, that'll be, it'll be perfectly obvious in the design guidelines.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And, and we will back up the words so that it's clear. Clear. If it's not clear enough to. Uh, shared parking?
I'm okay with it.
That's fine.
I think it's not enough. I think you should go, I think you should by right be able to eliminate, you know, the, the thirty percent that we talk about today.
All right.
And I would, and I would, I would also throw another jab in there for reducing the one point five, but.
Wasn't the, uh, wasn't the feedback that we got from, from, uh, people saying, gee, you're, you're making it too tight, which is why you went back to this proposal?
There were concerns about the reduction of parking, but again, this the, the requirement to reduce it comes with the definition from the developer that there's a reason to do it. Right? And that it's supported by what's being proposed in the development. So if the developer comes to us and says, this is why I think we can reduce the parking, then they've made their case, right? So if they can't make their case, then they can't reduce the parking. Right? I would also say that if we, if we don't keep the higher number of buy right percentages, then we strongly need to reconsider reducing the one point five number.
You mean the densities on that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, so the recommendation was okay with the density. So let me, uh, let me split the, the topic a little bit. I think in principle, I think there's good sound planning, why it could go that way. However, we need to kind of grow towards it, I would say. So. This would be meeting, and I think that's the intent of these recommendations to get closer to making some changes. And I think this is probably worth taking a little bit of a look at.
Right. So, right. So let's just put some numbers on this, right? We have a problem here where we, we talk about these percentages and these square footages and these, and, and and people don't understand how they actually apply to the, to the center itself, right? So the number was thrown out earlier in this meeting that most sites can't support more than twenty parking spaces. Right? So what's fifteen percent of twenty?
I don't.
Three.
Three. Right. So you're talking about reducing parking by three parking spaces. Is that, is that a significant impact?
Well, it's, it's probably, how many square feet is that? Probably twenty by six or seven.
Eight by twenty.
Eight by twenty. So a hundred and sixty times three, right?
At least, where do we say, I don't remember saying twenty. They couldn't get twenty spaces, honestly.
I, I said in my comments about the bicycle parking.
Right. But it's a pretty accurate number, right? How many, there's not, there's maybe two sites in that, in the, in the proposed district that could support more than twenty parking spaces. Right? So this, this benefit that you're giving the developer is two hundred and fifty square feet.
It's a good point.
Well, it's more than that.
So your proposal is thirty percent, Aaron?
That's what it is now.
Twenty by eight is a hundred. Hundred and sixty and.
So right, right now you can, you can bank thirty percent. So you're suggesting elimination.
We're, we're saying you can bank thirty percent, which just about everybody does, and no one has ever executed that, any of that thirty percent. So that thirty percent hold that's currently in our zoning has never been used in town. So why require it?
That's a good point. Well, I'm missing something. I mean, that, that's a good point, right?
Well, remember, um, half of the game here is selling these proposals. And when, when you get resistance to a proposal, um, a, a, and it might make sense to compromise, which is what this presently as it's written is, it's a compromise. Um, and as Rich said earlier, uh, you could always go back and, and change it later.
Yeah. So I mean.
Uh, I would argue that our compromise was going from one point five to one. We gave up on the one. And we, we started discussing working with numbers that are currently in the zoning guidelines, which is the thirty percent number.
I don't remember anybody talking about this thirty percent as being a problem. I don't know that people understand it, to be honest with you, or even will consider it.
Most of the offense to the parking was the reducing one point five to one.
That was all the discussion was on that alone.
Right.
Okay. Well, we can. All right. I mean.
I mean, if you want to go, go, you know, allow elimination of fifteen to thirty percent based upon information presented by developer, right? Make the developer prove that they can reduce it thirty percent.
Right. And that's the same, and that's the way the revised, technically, the, that's the, the revised language would be that you've got to demonstrate that you can reduce it.
Well, that's, that's the language regardless of the number fifteen or thirty or twenty-five or whatever.
All right. But I mean, that's, that's a compromise, right? Make it, make it a range. The developer has to prove that he can reach thirty percent. Right? And if he can't, he, they, if they can't, they stick with fifteen. If they put out a good case and, and, and an appropriate project, then maybe thirty makes sense.
So it could be up to.
Again, again, we're talking about reducing a parking, parking area that no one in town has ever used. Right? We're holding, we're holding strong to something in our bylaws that no one has ever used.
Describe what you mean. I don't understand what you mean by that. I do not understand what you mean by that.
The thirty, the thirty percent hold, right, is, is thirty percent of your lot has to be dedicated to allow future expansion of parking. Right? No one has ever expanded their parking into that thirty percent hold. So that's thirty percent, the area of that thirty percent hold on site is simply dead space on your site.
Well, yes and no. Uh, yes, under the, under current history is what you're saying. But who knows what new, new businesses are coming into, to that area? Um, we do have turnover in these, uh, in these, uh, businesses and particularly if we start putting in a lot of, um, mixed use developments with first floor, um, commercial. There's bound to be, uh, changes in there and who knows what, uh, business, parking requirements will, will come with a, a business that, uh, goes in after the first guy is in there.
Well, we know because Josh has shown us the parking stats from around the, the state. We also know that there's two MBTA lots that can be used if need be. And we know that all of the existing developments were designed to the current uh, inflated parking numbers. So one, one, one could argue that the current parking in center of town is already inflated and has the capacity to support development.
Gary, Chad, what do you guys think?
I think it's, I, I remember the arguments with the, um, all the discussions with people from the town. I remember people pointing to eighteen Union Street and saying they can't rent those apartments out because of par, parking. I remember someone's saying they're a Realtor and they knew all about parking. I, I remember it all. Um, and I also agree that it seems to have minimal impact on what the final design of, uh, any of these sites would be. Um, so I guess what I'm saying is I, I agree with the salesmanship aspect of what we're trying to do here. Um, what, what's, what are the people going to accept when you convey it to them? Cause I think that's where the roadblock existed the last time. I that's what I'm recalling.
And therefore, well, you would.
I, I, I would like, uh. I don't even know if the language has to be cleverly crafted, but, um, they are, they are not looking for distinct reductions from one point five to one point one. Um, they didn't understand it when they heard it the first time. I don't think they will understand it no matter how much information we give to them. If, if you, if you want to just control it with special permit, why would it matter?
So this, um. So this right now is, is something that, you know, will be part of the site plan approval process, what still is on the books. On the parking reg, you can apply for a special permit. For separate permit for complete reduction of it. So that, that's still there today.
Yeah.
So there is another, this is more something that would be, again, probably married up with the whole site plan approval process when somebody comes before the board.
Yeah. I, I, if I was a developer and I think there's at least one of them listening, I, I, I don't think this would make or break anything I was going to do. I, but I think if it's not understood and it's bundled together, uh, when presented to town for vote, uh, then it could cause confusion and cause the vote to fail.
So then.
Well, that is another discussion. Uh, are we, are we thinking, Rich, are you thinking of, uh, one article encompassing all of this information or a series of articles?
I don't know.
Yeah, there's only one way to do it. It's everything together.
I agree with that. I think you have to bundle it.
All right. Well, there you go.
I mean, it's up to, I mean, isn't it ultimately up to the select board to make that decision, but we make a recommendation and I, I think it needs to be bundled.
I mean, we, we've been saying it for two years. Planning is not a one-off scenario. Planning, planning is a, is, is planning. It's a, it's presenting a cohesive project and presentation and thought and execution.
Yeah, all right.
And you can't, you, you can't accept two, four, six and eight and reject one, three, nine and ten.
I understand. Okay. Well, I went down that side street, but back to the question about.
I mean, the point is taken, I think you've moved more towards consensus that this package may come out of your recommendate, you know. I think you might have a, maybe a four, zero recommendation on this package, maybe not. Cause Aaron doesn't like the boundaries at the moment, but, um, you know, if you bundle it all together, maybe you have a four O vote and it makes sense from a, a multiple layers.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, we, we were talking specifically about the number of fifteen or thirty.
Right.
And Chad, how about, how about you? Where do you stand on that?
I like Aaron's latest proposal where he said fifteen, two, thirty with, I believe he said some language about, you know, the developer has to show the, show us the data. So I'm.
Okay. I, I could, I could, I can live with that. I can live with that. Yeah.
So we could make that. So I think this, so jump into design guidelines. I think everybody understands that. Again. And strengthen that no-brainer, I think, um.
Yep.
The setback, um.
Rich, I do, I do want to add to the design guidelines, uh, that I hope uh, Josh and his team can. Josh and his team can update our build out numbers based on whatever does come of this conversation when we do the design guidelines. Because we're gonna get asked.
Oh, the the build out with the under the new densities?
Yes. We need. We need new data on that when when we.
Okay, I think we already, yeah.
Get off the pot here.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I can. I can accommodate that.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, um, so back to flipping to no, so at number six. So there is no build to line in the outer core. So I.
Yep.
So where where does 19 feet come from? Why 19? Why not 10? Why not 30?
I don't know. It it's a it's a remnant of the bylaw of the build to line that had six to 19 feet. I don't know how they derived it, but. It's it's in there.
I don't know, before my time.
Yeah, why?
Maybe there was an existing building and that's they said, oh, that looks good. We'll go with it. I don't know.
But I know this. I know this new proposal that doesn't apply within the inner core, right?
No, no. So the inner core is going to match. So the front yard setback will match the build to line.
Yeah.
Right now. You have the build to line, but then you also have minimum front yard of none.
So so. The setback is, is it six feet or is it six to 19 feet? How's the language going to be written?
Six feet.
Six.
That's what this says, but that's not what.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Well, that's not what that's not what page 10 of 37 says, but that's fine.
Really?
If it's six feet, that's fine. I was going to say it shouldn't be a range. It should be a number.
What where does it? Where does it say?
Is a minimum of six feet, and then there's the build to line, which is between six and 19 feet. So a building could be placed as at its front. Anywhere between six and 19 feet from the frontage.
Right, sorry. I my apologies, Aaron. I jumped ahead to the outer core. So no, disregard what I just said.
All right. So we're saying it has to be six feet and it could be as many as 19 feet.
The the built to line, yeah.
Yeah, and again, I so I questioned the 19 feet for the build to line, but that's.
In in my opinion, looking at the various parcels and their configurations of the with the build out diagrams we've done. Most most parcels are going to be nearer to that six feet just because they don't have the depth to accommodate a larger. You know, frontage in those properties that are large enough to accommodate it. I don't think 19 feet is is so far off that it would be inconsistent with some of the the properties in the town center. So I I don't feel uncomfortable with that range.
Okay. So bike parking.
Yep.
That works for me.
Okay, by me.
Sure. Do you want? Do you want to tackle in some refined uses?
I. I thought they were good.
Yeah, it's fine the way you kind of.
But yeah, my my only my only concern there is that. The list isn't long enough. There's probably other. Uses which might fit. We just haven't thought of them.
Well, those are those are additions to the list that already exists, right?
True, true, true. But I'm just saying that there might be other additions that we just haven't thought of yet. That's.
I think that's day day two. We had a lot of conversations about that in the P1 committee, I think. I think Josh Josh did a lot of talking about it, saying, look, that you just need to get a few things in there because they're no brainers and you can argue about the other ones later, so.
Yeah, I I like that. And I was going to mention that it's like, you know, let's add a few things that aren't going to be contentious. And are just they need to be there and shouldn't have any issues at getting them passed. Because they make sense.
Yep, there is that.
Then number nine, I think I think clear clarifies, right? So. We're it's really geared towards the future, not the present station, at least. In town center.
Yeah.
Yeah, good there. Let's hit the last one.
And removing the PMLD.
From the inner core.
Definitely.
Yep.
Okay, agreed.
Yep.
I think Walter, though, clarify, my impression was that it would apply to both sub districts, that it would be a complete removal of PMLD.
Well, everything else on here is is just intercore, is it not?
That's a good.
First nine.
The.
Yes.
Yeah.
Bike parking. We'd have to decide on that whether one whether we wanted to find it as intercore only and as as well with the uses.
I think we stick to intercore only to simplify things.
Yeah, I think so. Gosh, you don't want to. So I think removing PMLD, although it may be a good idea for for the outer core, let's just stick everything to intercore and and make it a little easier to sell, I think.
Unless we're legally obligated to be consistent for some reason, but yeah.
Okay. So uniform, just to clarify, so uniformly, we'll just have to, Rich, you and I will have to find some language to make sure that these all these changes uniformly apply only to the revised B1 inner core.
Yeah.
I think that's that's important in our presentation because we're. Our the main. The main premise of our presentation is is there's a there's a focus district in the center of the of town where we're talking about these changes and we don't want to leak outside of that or.
Right.
It's a weakness.
Well, and I think I think some of these apply to that that the new outer core that we're making, but I think it's going to complicate the message.
Yeah, it could be part two, right? We get we get the inner core approved and then next year we come back with the outer core, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Agreed.
Fair enough. Okay.
Question through the chair. It's Peter Diamond.
Yes, Peter. Yes.
Good presentation going on here. I want to agree with Walter on the building height. I think the present zoning. We referred to it generally as two and a half stories. Because the roof line. Did have to be built into the third story, although it was three stories. The example at 18 Union Street. His third story is generally limited in floor area because of the two and a half story. Restriction. So I would agree with Walt to maybe clarify that a little better. Because I can pull that right out of there. The. Right now it's not full three stories. It's two and a half stories. And on residential density. With the 16 units per acre, my question is. How many lots are there downtown that are maybe more than one acre? I think there's maybe a four or five acre lot.
There's three.
There's three large lots.
There's three more than an acre.
So. And then Gary so brought up a good point earlier about a graduated affordable housing percentage. And I think he mentioned. One community has, and I believe Medfield has that also. So once those number of units increases, so if there's a four acre lot. We would be getting 64. Units possibly. With only a 10% affordable. Attachment to that, so. I would ask Josh. For a recommendation, do other towns graduate? Their percentage of affordable units with the increase of units per property allowed.
And I'll I'll tag on to what Peter's saying is was one of the things I was going to add on here is that I I think we should. I think we should consider at least a 15% affordable unit for the entire district. Right? Considering. Considering our issues with 40B. Considering the current, the way we started this conversation with what the the state is doing. Considering if there's any place in town, we are going to encourage. Affordable housing, the center of town where there's a train station is it. I I don't know that. The 15% doesn't. The touch points on a lot of the things we're talking about, and even what Peter was just talking about, seem to be density and height. The 15% affordable isn't doesn't hit any of those touch points.
I I I don't disagree. I I think the the. The concern, if there if there is one, is the one that Rich raised earlier. Aren't we stepping on the toes of another initiative that's going on in town to address that issue through the development of a new affordable housing plan?
No, no, not this. What I was saying is that I think it's. That's one of the topics that we will be talking about as part of the next housing. Production plan. So a couple. So let me just quickly. So the inclusionary bylaw that was on the books already in 2018, one of the recommendations, the housing production plan. Was to allow for payment and loo. That was specifically towards ownership. So we did end up having. Our our first development, we have payment and loo. So when it comes to rental. It's not, there isn't a payment and loo option. So it's a. It's just based on rental. So I think I need to look at the. There may be tweaks to the affordable bylaw that may make more sense. So for example. It's graduated. So there's a rounding. So because when we would deal with ownership. And we were doing, can't do a quarter of a unit.
Yeah, but I I'd argue in this case, gradual would make sense if if we had a larger area and and we had, you know, a better gradation of sites, right? We don't. We don't really have gradation. We have small sites and large sites, and we only have three large sites.
Yep.
I I think what we're doing with the size of the boundary that we've heavily negotiated. I think it, you know, inside a larger B1 out boundary, I think it's begging for this 15. I would I would argue 20, but. I I'm immediately compromising to 15 because I'm assuming no one's going to want to go to 20. But I I think it's a very responsible planning decision. And I would I would, and I don't know that it's going to add significantly to the. I would I would. Make an argument that it's more beneficial than negative to what we're trying to do.
Because because. Aaron, because?
Because we're encouraging dense development and denser development. And. One of the benefits of denser development is its affordability. So we should be taking full advantage of our opportunities to create affordable housing and requiring that it happen. While while we are arguing to increase the density downtown. And again, again, if it doesn't, if if we don't push for affordable housing in the center of town, where are we going to put it? Right? It's got to go somewhere in town, right? We we started this conversation with 40B being adopted in 1960. And the fact that, you know, we didn't talk about it today, but we've got seven 40B proposals before us. We've got, you know, two projects, two projects under construction, three on the books. It's coming, right? It's 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 not going to stop, right? We need. We need to plan. For. Be proactive planning for fighting 40B. And this is the district. This is one of our main locations to be able to do that, the inner core of the business district.
Are you saying adding more to the inner core affordable?
I'm saying that, yeah, I'm saying that we should we should strongly consider adding the the instead of 10% affordable, we should say 15, if not 20. Is required. For development in the B1 inner core.
So I think the I think so. Here's the it's kind of a balancing act question, I guess, is that. You know, when you got into the when we worked before on that schedule, the Josh had put together of the going across the scheduling viability of making the projects. So, yeah, we've increased density, but now we just bumped up the affordability requirement, which I understand the goal to get.
But it's a benefit to the town, right? Right? The town wants to know what they're getting out of all this density. You know what they're getting? They're getting proactive. Proactive planning of a 40B problem.
Well, what about the issue of? Of making it harder for the developer to make a buck. And therefore discouraging the developer to come in and build in the in the center there.
I think you. I mean. So we kind of so now. We've. You want to increase the affordability, which I understand principle. Okay, we want to increase affordability. Well, we're not going to increase the building height. We're going to keep that down. We're not gonna, we're not.
We have increased the building height by six feet. And we've added a half a story.
All right.
And and we've increased the residential density significantly.
Okay.
And we've limited the parking space.
So you think it should be? I mean.
And and now what what you're proposing is we offset it a little bit. In terms of attractiveness to a developer by increasing the affordability, right? That's really what we're doing.
Yeah, you could look at it that way. Again, I would say one of the one of the things that we've been criticized for is not. Not looking out enough for what the town is getting out of this. And again, I. The town needs ways to manage 40B development and this this business district is is one of two places to do it.
Yeah.
Right? And the other the other place in transparency is Southwood, right? So you've got you've got the inner core business district and you've got Southwood. That's what the town has as its assets to battle 40B. Otherwise, we're talking about 40B developments on our farms and fields.
Yeah, but that's.
Okay, well, I think I think the points take, I think it's fair to say, okay, let's. Yes, increase the affordability to 15% and what does the town get out of it? It gets out more affordability. So, yeah, that does answer that question to the to the town. Understand that. And then. I think then we'll have to. If if it goes through as is, and we'll see what this package does, whether we. Have. Put the table to maybe have something more happen or not. And then. If it does, great. If it doesn't, why not? Right? What what's the what's the barrier impediment? I mean, I.
Chad, you haven't you haven't chimed in on this one.
No, I haven't. Um. I do recall. We had some some really good discussions. A year ago, maybe more. Well, we did talk about raising the affordable number. And I don't recall. I think we had a lot of pushback on that, if I recall correctly. So. I'm just not sure how we want to move forward with that because, again, we want to put together a. You know, a package. I like what Aaron's saying is we we, you know, we want to make, you know, our job is to plan and. I do feel that increasing that number in that hot in the inner core is appropriate. It's a balancing act. Of how. We don't want that one piece to jeopardize it passing.
True. Gary, what do you think?
I I think the other towns around you have made the change. It was the Wollpole reference that. You were talking about. I'm just looking at the note I put in last month. And as soon it was six to 12 units was 10%. And then 15% corresponding to developments with more than 20 units. The towns are doing it. I think we should do the same thing. I don't. See it as an issue beyond that.
A good point, Gary, yeah.
So just a couple. So is that? Is it? Where does this start at 15% at 20?
Uh, yes, and there were there were three tiers. I only put two of them in my notes. I could look up the the document again, or we could just check with someone in Wollpole. There was something in the middle.
Josh could come up with a with a, you know, this is what towns around are doing in terms of stepped zoning, right?
Yeah, there was a gap. I had six to 12 is 10%. It was 12 to 20, and then above 20 was 15. So they had like, I don't know, a 12% or something.
What are the other members of the B1 committee who are still with us here? Think about about this issue.
I would say very quickly, if I could jump in, I'm sorry, I can't raise my hand since I was made co-host.
Okay.
At the end of the day, the 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 requirement for an affordable component doesn't really take away from the value of this to the residents of this town. It adds to the benefit from their perspective. As Aaron correctly noted, we. As Erin correctly noted, we need ammunition to be able to, uh, plan and address for the affordable gap we currently have. Um, the detriment comes to, or the perceived detriment, better put, comes to the developer. Somebody who would be perceivably getting market price for these units that are now going to be coming in. At an affordable level. Uh, so I, I don't think that we should be framing this as something that would cause this not to pass a town meeting. Uh, this is something that could conceivably cause us to not get as many, uh, projects or proposals in as we may have wanted to see. Uh, that being said, I would wholeheartedly support going up to 15%. Because at the end of the day, you have to compare what this zoning is going to do to make it more attractive for a developer to partner with us. Instead of going down the 40B route. And the 40B route, they would have to do 20 to 25% affordability. I think that this is a reasonable ask.
Anyone else care to comment?
I, I agree with the 15%. I would do the tier two, but I, I think at a minimum, the 15% I think is very reasonable and I don't think it. Puts anybody off, a developer off. We're talking small numbers here.
Okay, all right. It sounds like a, sounds like a deal.
So then just to, the deal would have it as a tiered approach, not a.
I, I have a feeling Josh is going to come back and say, in order for projects on a lot of our small sites to remain. Competitive to developers, you're going to need to tier it. I mean, if somebody's coming in and putting in six units, you know, I guess it's only one affordable unit, but. I don't know, let's, let's see. I mean, I, maybe. Maybe the recommendation of this one is for, is for Rich and Josh to do a little bit of homework and see if, you know, 15%, 20% or some stepped thing makes more sense.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree with it too.
My initial reaction to this conversation is that. A stepped approach, I think would, would. Both be a better position to come back since we had previously proposed a, a uniform 15%. I think a stepped approach would, would represent more of a. You know. Nuanced position coming back to with the set of recommendations and. I think it would help to alleviate some of those economic concerns for the smaller development projects.
Good, okay. Well, please dig into it and come back with a set of recommendations then.
All right, well, I, I think that. Kind of wraps up the discussion. I do appreciate.
Let, let me, let me wrap it up too, Rich, by, by. Saying something, repeating rather, something I said earlier at another meeting, which is I'd like to. To extend my thanks to all the members of the B1 committee who have labored on this. Really tough work for the past couple of years and, and dug into this stuff. It's not easy and. God help us if we can't sell it, uh, because then you'll really get deflated, having been there a couple of times before. But thank you all for, for the work you've put in thus far. I appreciate it. Okay, um. We still have a couple of items on our agenda, not big items, but a couple of items. Anything else, Rich, before we move on?
Well, I think we have our clear march orders. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, let's see, Gary, I think you're up on meeting minutes.
Yes, sure, I will, um. Make a motion. I'm just trying to remember the date. I think it was December 8th. Uh, make a motion to, um. Accept the, um, December 8th planning board meeting minutes as amended.
Have a second? Can we do a second? Chad's trying to say something.
Second.
Okay, there we go. All right. All right, all those in favor, say, all right, let's see, Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. All right, we'll take care of that. Town planner updates, uh, presentation on sewer study, Rich.
Yeah, uh, just quickly, we're planning to have Woodward and Kern present to the planning board. On, on the, at the next meeting.
Yep.
February 9.
Yep.
Should we try to be, could people meet a little bit earlier? Uh, by each answer.
Sure. Yeah, we're at 6:30. You want us to do a 6:30?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just.
All right, okay.
Are you just trying to fit them in, Rich? Do you want to ask them what they need for time and then just back out of it?
No, like. Could, so we, do we put anything at seven?
I don't have a, a, a draft agenda in front of me, do you?
I'm, I'm not sure.
We didn't put time on anything in this meeting.
So I think if we, I think 6:30 would be reasonable, so we could do, you know. I'll talk to them about a 30, 45 minute presentation.
Aaron, can you make that?
I can.
Okay.
Okay.
Okie dokie, uh. Anything else that you want to comment on, uh? Update us on, Rich?
Well, I think the only, just quickly, uh, we, we pushed out to the website, the community meeting on the 26th of January. Uh, I'm going to be working with life.
It's on Southwood.
Correct, on Southwood. Um, my understanding is unless something. Happens, otherwise they're going to close on the property this Friday, 15th of January.
Wow. That's exciting.
So, uh, yeah, so there.
And, and I know you told them that, that they ought to be careful because it requires a, a, an allowed use change at a town meeting vote.
Yeah, so they're. Yes, yes, they're aware of that as well and they certainly talked about that and obviously they. Were on the discussion with the planning board back in December. Um, and they also have gotten. Some feedback from the community at that meeting. They'll get obviously additional feedback. And we'll, um. You know, I will, I just got to get to them the article, but I will share the article. That was in, in the local paper. I think in general terms, the 26th meeting is to really kind of talk about. The site as it. Has been viewed by the town in a variety of different reasons. We, we talked already about. Tonight, affordable housing aspect. I know. You know, at the last meeting, it was concerns from people relative to affordable housing. So we need to touch on that a little bit at that time.
I think you ought to show the, uh, the list of allowed use, current allowed uses also.
We'll show, we'll show the current allow uses. Um, you know, water. Is, is something that we need to be mindful of here. Um. You know, we don't have endless supply. Obviously, you know, we have water bans and. So that's a challenge to try to get something that everybody. Can get themselves around. Uh, that's an issue that we need to deal with there. There is, uh, you know, there is a deed restriction on the property right now. That will need to go before the legislature remove the hospital limitation on it. So. I'm hoping that at least we could start that we're having a conversation about it. It's not a done deal. That was a concept plan. I know, you know, they, you know, if I was a teacher grading a presentation. Yes, they probably should have done a few things differently because it did. Rub people the wrong way. Um, so. I know we need to, they need to do a better job at that too. And so hopefully it's more of starting a conversation with the community about, there's a balancing act.
Regarding the balancing act, uh, one thing you, you might, uh, look into as well. Uh, we spent about three years on a zoning working committee. Working up, um, among other things, town mitigation, uh. That, uh, this guy, George. What the hell was his last name? So Malone. Yeah, was, was going to, uh. Offer the town as, as a consequence of the particular type of development that he was putting in there. He was going to pay for the, uh, the running of the water main. Or a new well, uh, he was going to contribute, uh, to ambulance and police service, et cetera, et cetera. So. Just the issue of, of depending on what goes in there, mitigation for the town may be appropriate.
Correct. And, and one of the things that we want to be, too, and now they'll be part of the presentation. Is that. Where that proposal was before and where we are at now. The notion of doing age restricted affordable housing. Is not permissible. So. If people come in thinking that we're going to get age restricted affordable housing. As part of this mix, that's not something that's on the table. We were fortunate enough to be able to. The enclave that was an age restrictive one that had been in permitting with the ZBA. To be able to make its way through at the state level. So they have since. Mirrored their guidelines, so they're not allowing age restricted affordable housing anymore. So, you know, those are kind of some of the things we need to just. Make people aware of and, uh. You know, assisted living, I do know that was part of the proposal. Not all assisted living are the same. Some are common more impact, that kind of stuff. So. Traffic, I mean, it's, we're starting a process. It has, it's not over.
Right, right.
And then, um. I do want to reach out. I know MAMPC is doing some work around e-commerce. I would like to see if we can get, and I did talk about with them this morning. With them, maybe to give us some. You'll come in and give us some reports to us because it's, it's not just a Norfolk issue. It's all, it's a, it's a nationwide issue. It's a regional issue, e-commerce, so. To, to kind of talk about some of the findings that we have.
Okay, um, just to reiterate what we said earlier. The discussion about the, uh, uh, various voters. Select board policies that they sent us, uh, will be put on the next, uh. Next, next month's agenda.
Walter, can I jump in with two items for Rich?
Sure.
What's the update on the street signs?
Um, so. I believe there's no final decision yet.
Did we get, did you get a recommendation from the design board, design review board?
I did get a recommendation from the design board, which was the black and the white. Which, uh.
Who else uses?
That's, so, that's, yep. Well, anyway, that's the recommendation, so. And, uh, well, the chairman's on the line here, but I think it's still in committee. I don't think they've made a final, there is no final decision yet. On the street sign, except for they allowed the street sign to go up the redwood circle.
What was that? What color?
Well, that was green.
Okay. That was just the sign that we had in, in tow to be able to bridge us until our next meeting. We're waiting to get some more clarification on the requirements from the state. And the federal guidelines and whatnot, uh, to determine what the best path forward is. I, I think there's a strong desire. And an emotional connection to the street signs as they are now, and we're just trying to see if there's an avenue for us to maintain some aspects or semblance of that. Uh, before we move forward with the sign that was recommended and that design, the design review board, uh, suggested to us. So, uh, we should have this wrapped up at our next meeting.
There's no desire on my part to maintain those, those white posts. Get rid of them.
Second that.
A second item. I know, Rich, I, I don't remember if we officially put this on your list of, your long list of things to do or not, but you know. We had our conversation again about the neighborhood tonight and. The unfortunate amount of time that seems to happen between the first house and these developments and the last house in these developments and then the inevitable struggle over landscape and street. It would be great. To try and get language into our requirements, our, our zoning subdivisions along the lines of. You know. Landscape and paving required when last house is occupied unless. Project goes beyond five years, at which point, you know, I, I don't know what the right language is, but you, you understand what I'm getting at, right?
Yeah, so before you, yeah, actually. Yes, so what, what I was suggesting, uh, maybe earlier, well, to Walter during the, the day was that. Maybe, um. One, two members could form a subcommittee with us to work with DPW to kind of formulate changes. In the regs and then present them to the board to kind of work it through. And then, I agree. And, and DPW agrees as well, so it'll be in concert with them as well. So.
Thanks. That's it. Thanks, Walter.
Okay, uh, any other, uh, new business before we, uh. Adjourn. We're getting time and a half here, I know.
And a half of nothing is still nothing.
Hey, you're not supposed to say that. All right. Let's see, uh, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I do see, uh, Donna Jones has her hand up.
Oh, uh, Donna. Flower lady here, let's. Donna, Donna is on mute. She took her hand down. I think. Well, let's see. Rich, can you unmute her or does she have to do it?
Did I do it?
Yeah, you did it finally.
Okay. Maybe Kevin can help with this. Like on this planning board agenda, there's accepting the select board's policies.
Yeah, we're going to postpone that discussion till next month.
Hang on. Um, as I understood it, this is like an HR thing that the select board have a policy. And as being on a board, you. Accept that you will follow their policy.
Well, maybe, maybe.
I could talk to that Walter if you'd like.
But go ahead, Kevin.
So Donna, what we sent out was, uh, an ethics policy that the select board had adopted. And it wasn't intended for everybody to have some decree from the select board that they adopt the same policy. It was essentially that you could look at the policy that we drafted and adopted and determine if it fits and works for your board or a committee. If it doesn't, it doesn't. There's nothing that anybody is going to do to force that on anybody. Uh, but we did want to circulate it. As we thought it was a good addition to our policies and procedures as a board. So, uh, just to clarify what that was meant to do.
Okay, I read it differently. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that clarification, Kevin. I think that helps the board for next meeting, right?
Yep, yep. So, uh, Kevin, you can, you can take back the board's recommendation to get rid of the white posts.
Duly noted, Walter. Thank you.
Uh, you know, I've had people come into town trying to find my house and say, I couldn't find it. I didn't know. It was really difficult, you know? Now this is before GPS, I, I'll grant you that, but. Oh, he said, I guess there is a street sign. It's those white things. Yeah, okay, right.
Walter, Walter, if I might just close, I, I, I want to just thank the board and, and the B1 committee for sticking with. This two years of work here on this and Josh and, and Rich. It's, uh. It feel, it feels once again like we're going in a forward direction, which is a good thing and, 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 and. No longer feels like the last two years have been wasted, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks for everyone's part in that. I appreciate it and.
Yeah.
Hopefully we can keep the train running here.
Yeah.
What, what else would Josh have been doing?
All right, motion to adjourn.
I moved.
It's second. All right, Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Chair says aye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.